Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call. I don't think. Oh, yeah, it is. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Do we have closed session reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
All right. I know we're having a presentation from the Youth Council tonight, but I was wondering if he would come up now and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Just anywhere, yeah.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Nothing like being put on the spot. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here. Are there any items for agenda review?
Yes, Mayor, there is a supplemental on public hearing item 5A.
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Seeing none, proceed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, first on the agenda is item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of October 2024 as Bullying Prevention Month, and Community Services Coordinator Ryan Fowler is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The month of October 2024 is recognized as Bullying Prevention Month. To accept the proclamation, I would like to invite the following Youth Council members to come forward. Abhishek Kumbey and Arjun Prabhuram. The proclamation reads, whereas whereas one out of five or 20% of American students report being bullied, and whereas multiple research studies have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence, and whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people, and whereas bullying occurs everywhere, including neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and online through technology, and whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire long-lasting physical, emotional, behavioral, and learning problems, and are more likely to refrain from participating in school, work, and attending community activities, and whereas it is estimated over 4.5 million students skip school annually due to bullying, and 85% of the time, no one intervenes to help, and whereas everyone's actions matter, and we all have a role to play in creating a world without bullying by uniting for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and whereas the Simi Valley Youth Council has identified decreasing bullying as one of its priorities and will coordinate a citywide Stop Bullying campaign. Now, therefore, the month of October 2024 is hereby proclaimed Bullying Prevention Month in the City of Simi Valley to reduce the incidence of bullying in the community presented this seventh day of October 2024.
Great subject. I was lucky, I was the biggest guy in the school, so I never got bullied. But this is really a problem. And, of course, the Youth Council decided to take it on and try to make a difference, just like they do with everything else, and really proud of you guys.
You guys want to talk about it?
On the behalf of the Youth Council, thank you, Mayor Thomas, and the City Council for proclaiming October as Bullying Prevention Month. This issue is far-reaching, and we're guessing everyone here has been impacted by bullying in some form at some point in their lives. As part of our bullying prevention campaign, we're coordinating a citywide Stop Bullying pledge at the City Expo and Simi Valley Street Fair on Saturday, October 26, at the Simi Valley Town Center. We invite everyone to stop by our Youth Services booth between 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and sign the pledge banner. We are also asking everyone to wear orange on Wednesday, October 16, in observance of National Unity Day. When we all stand up for those who are being bullied, promote kindness, be more accepting of people's differences, and make an effort to include those who are left out, we will finally end bullying.
All right. Good job.
Do you want to go further?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item number two. It is a time allotted for public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports only. Public statements on all other items on the agenda, except public hearings, take place during Agenda Item 4 and Agenda Item Number 6 exclusively. Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker for this item. John Lapper?
Yeah, it was about a year ago where I think I spoke on the same subject. First of all, I'd like to commend the Youth Council for their efforts in curtailing bullying. We all know how serious it is. I had a nice text chat with Mayor Thomas, and as mayor and councilpersons, you have the ability to ask Simi residents to lower the volume on some of the hate and fear that exists in Simi. Many of you may know that for the last seven Saturdays in front of TGIF, I had a Harris Walls booth, and it was incredibly positive, and the response from Simi residents was wonderful, with the exception of a lot of profanities, throwing of water on some of our flag carriers, and even one Saturday, they moved in right next to us to intimidate us and take over the corner. Another resident got ahold of me today, and I was a little surprised. She had a Harris Walls sign out in front of her yard. And there was an incident there where Simi PD got called, and when the Simi PD officer saw this Harris Walls sign, he gave a stare that was very intimidating, to the point where the husband asked the wife to take down the sign. And I can tell you, with the booth, it was amazing how many people were literally afraid to put up a Harris Walls sign in our city. And I think we can all agree that that's not where we want to be at this political season. So, again, I just remind you, you have the power to curtail a lot of the people. You know them on social media. That bullying is their way of life, so, and I thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3B1, Presentation of Simi Valley Transit's New Micro Transit Service. Deputy Public Works Director Ben Gonzalez will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and councilmembers. This evening, as the city clerk introduced, we're going to introduce you to a proposed program for the spring of this 2025 called Micro Transit. But before that, we'd like to update you on our transit services, any changes that have been made in the last couple of years as a result of the Short-Range Transit Plan. And, of course, Ben Gonzalez, our Deputy Public Works Director for Transit, will be making the presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. Like Ron had mentioned, we'd like to give you a quick update on our transit services and our new micro-transit services that'll be coming in 2025. So first, we want to kind of go over just a quick overview here. You'll see some of the bullets about our short-range transit plan, which is a study that is done every five to six years and kind of has an outlook, kind of gives you projections of which one to do improved services, operational, financial, and capital improvements for. So the first thing what we did in 2019 is City Council adopted the SRTP. And of that study, a few things that were outlined was restructuring our fixed route services, which took place, right, unfortunately, during the pandemic in March 2020. And one of the other suggestions was to improve efficiencies of our ADA Dial-Ride services. And lastly, amongst several other things, but most importantly, was our on-demand micro-transit services, which is a recommendation they did to put out to help enhance our fixed route services and the Dial-Ride services as well. This next slide here kind of gives you an overview of some of the things that we had before the study was conducted. We had all routes were restructured, as we said earlier, in March 2020. Part of the restructuring, we had four routes. Those four routes had long wait times for passengers. It lacked a service frequency, anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour and 15 minutes for a bus to come by at a stop. And then the last thing we had was our Wood Ranch service, which had low or no ridership at all on some days, to be honest. Our new services that we talked, mentioned earlier, March 2020, we implemented three service routes, improved the ease of passenger transfers. And if you notice, we have our temporary transit hub right out here in Civic Center, which helps so passengers can easily get from one route to another. We increased frequency from 35 to 45-minute headways. Added Moor Park College service, and that was an existing route. We just added probably an additional 15, 20 minutes of travel. So it was an existing route, we just stretched that a little bit further out, headed to the college to make connections with the City of Moor Park College as well. And then we removed service to Wood Ranch due to low ridership. And then we implemented new fare technology for token transit, which would help our riders kind of, so they didn't have to have cash or coins. This would help them board a lot quicker on our vehicles. This here is just a quick overview of our current existing services. As you could see, from south, we go down as Royal, and then on the northern side, up to Alamo, and then east-west, Moor Park College, and then further out on the east side to the Chasworth MetroLink, where we make connections to Metro and the Orange Line services. Here we have, year over year, of our ridership. As you could see, in 1819, we have 266,000. And, of course, if you can imagine, as you guessed, in 1920, the dip was due to the pandemic with 181. And then, right when we, as you could see, year over year, we're slightly increasing to about 182 for this last fiscal year. And those numbers continue to go up little, but nowhere near the 266,000 that we had prior to the pandemic. So we're probably projecting close to maybe 200,000 if, by the end of this fiscal year. Our ADA Dial-Ride services, we implemented new technology, which consisted of dispatching and scheduling software. And that, what that did was kind of just enhance our efficiency for scheduling, made our rides quicker, boarding times, improve our on-time performance. And we also added mobile data terminals, which helps the drivers get from A to B a lot quicker rather than having to guess where the addresses are. As a result of those changes, we did increase our passengers per hour. On average, you're probably at 2.7, 2.8 nationwide, and we increased that probably on average now about 4.5 per hour. We also improved our on-time performance, about 3% or 4%. And we're able to meet the increased demand of ridership as a result of those, the scheduling software that we implemented. And then we increased our efficiency for our drivers and operations staff. Just to, like I said earlier, just it helped increase our on-time performance and then get our riders from point A to point B a lot easier. Here's a snapshot of our Dial-A-Ride ridership. As you could see, in 1819, we had approximately 40,000 riders. And then, of course, we had the dip in 1920, the pandemic. And then, as you'll see in the last bar there, we've actually exceeded our pre-pandemic numbers at 48,000 riders, and that number continues to slightly rise month over month. Okay, next, so what's, what is micro-transit? As it says here, that's basically an Uber-Lift type service. It's the best way to explain it, or like our Dial-Ride services, but just an enhanced type of service. It's a shared ride service. Trips are requested through smartphone or electronic device, and they also have an option to call and book a ride if they do not have an electronic device. So they're not solely have to use their smartphone or any device that they have. The thing that's different about micro-transit is it operates within specific zones, and we'll show you that in the next couple of slides, to major points of interest or existing fixed route connections. So it's direct service with limited pickup and drop-off locations throughout the city. And then it also operates where, within areas that a conventional bus cannot access. For example, though, the benefit of this, there'll be smaller vehicles, so they'll be able to go into shopping centers, in the parking lots, closer door-to-door, whereas now, fixed route services, they have to get off at a fixed route bus stop, and they have to walk a quarter mile or two to get to their destination. And then, lastly, we'll charge a premium service fare, anywhere from $4 to $5. We're going to have our community meetings and kind of determine the exact charge of our fare. And this here just kind of gives you a snapshot of what we talked about in the last slide. So the rider will request a ride, whether it be a phone or smart device. And then, like, if any of you rode Uber or Lyft, you'll see it'll automatically tell you where the nearest vehicle is, the exact pickup time, and then the arrival notification. And the benefit of this is it's an on-demand service, whereas right now, our existing Dial-Ride service, you have to call one to seven days in advance. So advantage is now that our riders will be able to call within the hour, see if a vehicle's available, book the trip, and it'll be there within minutes, as long as there's a vehicle within the area, that specific zone. Here is a zone here. For example, this will be one zone here where they'll get a ride to their house, go to their school, medical appointment, shopping. And it does, not illustrated here on the map, on the picture here, but let's just say this is Zone 1, hypothetically speaking, and there's another zone in Wood Ranch. So if they want to go from Zone 1 to Zone 2 in Wood Ranch, they can book a trip from here to Zone 2, Zone 3, or Zone 4. If it's outside the zone area that it shows here, then they will not be able to get to this exact location. Here's a picture of the micro-transit electric van that we'll be getting. We'll be purchasing at least three or four within the next three or four months. And these are nine passenger vans, a little bit smaller than our traditional Dallary vans that we have on the street now. And we hope to receive those, like I said, in the, within, by the end of this calendar year, actually. Some more micro-transit facts. Micro-transit is implemented across the United States, and it has been very successful wherever it goes. It kind of spreads like wildfire, to be honest. It's a very popular service, as you can probably imagine, because it's a, it's an on-demand type service. Within Ventura County, we have Gulf Coast, Moor Park Transit, who have operated that Gulf Coast. I think they implemented probably about two years ago. And Moor Park Transit recently, about a one year, a year and a half ago. And like I mentioned before, it'll be a premium fare per trip. So what's on our next step for micro-transit? We'll conduct community workshops within the four zones. Wood Ranch will be one of the four zones. And in case you wanted, like I mentioned earlier, we pulled fixed route service from there. And we'd like to kind of, as part of the study, it was recommended that we put some sort of service back in there. Not all-day service, but something to kind of help the residents who had service there to get to their appointments. The three electric EVs, electric vans, that we'll be getting, we're implementing the software and training for staff. And then we hope to go live by early spring. And then we'll kind of assess the effectiveness of each zone. So the beauty about micro-transit is you don't, the zones aren't set in stone. You can kind of do your analysis, and you kind of adjust. So if there aren't any popular, if there's not demand at a specific zone, you can kind of adjust it, move it to a different zone, or you can expand on it. So if you have three or four zones, you can add additional zones throughout the city. However, you have to just make sure you have the vehicles and the staffing as it expands. You have to kind of be ready for growth. And with that, open up for any questions.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Hi. This should be an easy question. Will the hours be the same as our current transit system?
The hours will be limited. However, we'll kind of gauge the public on that through the workshops. Initially, we're thinking more of the traditional eight to five hours. That's when everyone's asking for the medical appointments, shopping trips, things of that nature. However, if there is a demand to have earlier service, then we'll adjust accordingly.
Perfect, thank you. No, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I pushed the wrong button.
Councilmember Littler?
I'm sorry, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you. By first, I wanted to understand the cost differential. I know you're still determining to set the price. You said maybe $4 to $5. What do we, what does someone currently pay for Dial-A-Ride versus what is this going to cost?
Dial-A-Ride is currently $2 each way. Fixed route is $1.50. Typically, you want to always make your, most cities charge a premium. The reason for that is because if you charge less than your Dial-A-Ride or your fixed route service, what happens, then your other services will suffer. And then someone who wants to, you know, just kind of open the floodgates, for lack of a better word, and then so, and it's a premium service. You're asking same-day on-demand type service, so you want to have some control over it. But there's a couple of cities that have charged a lot less than that, and they've tripled the fleet size and had to add more drivers to the services.
And I guess that was where I was going to go with my next question, was to maybe speculate on how this might impact the Dial-Ride services or fixed route. Are you envisioning this completely separate to try to attract new passengers? Or do you see that there might be some taken away from those services?
I think a little bit of both, to be honest. It's going to enhance our Dial-Ride services. We often get calls, you know, same day, saying, "I need a medical appointment," or "I need to get to the grocery store." So instead of using our traditional Dial-Ride service, this will be a supplement to that, so that they'll be able to get that same-day ride. So I think it's going to help build on that. It'll just be an additional service. And then it'll help attract new riders. Specifically, we'll want to, at least hopefully through community meetings, add this service where we don't have fixed route or Dial-Ride services now. As you may know, our Dial-Ride and fixed route services, we do not service in the whole city. We're limited within middle of town and not the outskirts of Simi Valley. So if there's a demand, you know, to go further south or north, we can kind of add more service there where our fixed route service does not serve.
Okay. And my question, are these the first electric vehicles that we will be having in our fleet? That, I mean, to my knowledge, this is, is that correct?
Yes, these will be the first ones, and these will be pilot vehicles. And this is kind of a good way, at least for this type of service, to see. Because it'll be limited service, they'll run six, seven hours per day, hopefully. So we have, we'll have plenty of fleet, buses in the fleet to back up if there is an increased demand, or for that matter, if we have to expend our hours, we'll have our CNG vehicles also to back that up.
Well, and I guess, I'm thinking ahead, because our consent item, number one, deals with batteries for electric, basically approving a grant to receive three batteries, if I'm not mistaken. And I was, I was going to pull the item and ask. I won't do that now, because we're having this conversation. I just want my fellow councilmembers to know that. I'm not pulling that consent calendar item. But my question is, is that, is this, the battery, the three that in that consent out, is that to support this fleet, or is that something totally separate?
Correct. The GRAS, just see the CRP grant, that is for portable electric chargers. That'll be kind of the interim charging batteries that will be charging these vehicles, because they're smaller vehicles, they're minivans, so it won't require enormous facilities that we're hoping to build soon. But this is kind of the interim fix, so we can put the service out and get it on the road. It's been long overdue, so this is kind of help us kind of get that service going.
And then I guess I'll ask just one last question, and just, do you see that these vehicles will be used at all for Dial-A-Ride? Are you intending to keep them very separate for the different uses?
We have a grant, so both. So initially, we have three vehicles, that'll be for the micro-transit services. And then we have four of the same vehicles that we'll be using for ADA services, which we haven't purchased yet, but that's, that'll be our next order.
And those are also the electric?
Right.
Visioned.
And then we have an additional eight CNG vehicles, also for our Dial-Ride services. So it'll be a mixed fleet until we're comfortable with how the vehicles are performing to back it up in case there are any issues.
Okay. And I said that was the last question, but I lied. One more, I'm sorry. I just want to understand, because I know that Mayor Protem Rhodes was speaking earlier in another conversation about similar, kind of fixed, some similar type of a transit system, where they picked up literally at bus stops, but then they delivered all over to different specific places. I just want, in my mind, to be clear, that is this different? This is door-to-door service, or is this similar to what I just described?
So ours will be curb-to-curb service. Some services, the one like you probably heard about, and I believe, I'm not sure, I think Moor Park also does the same thing. They have the fixed route, virtual stops is what they call them. The downside is that if there's a resident, they'll have to walk to their destination. So here, we're, it's kind of an enhanced service where we'll drop them off door-to-door, curb-to-curb, for that matter, at their residence. When they go to Costco, for example, we'll drop them as close as possible, rather than a stop out in the street on Cochran. So it'll be a little bit more, I would say, just enhanced service than the one. And in some transit agencies, they kind of do both. The more popular one is curb-to-curb. There are some that do the fixed route services, where they drop them off at a bus stop or a virtual stop on the street, and then have them walk to their destination, wherever they're going to.
Okay.
And we, and again, we could adjust, or we could make it a hybrid also. We could do curb-to-curb, and also we could do, our goal is to also add some fixed stops. For example, some of our bus stops we'll have as a drop-off, so that if they want to get from micro-transit, they can easily transfer from there to a local bus stop service. If they wanted to go to Chasworth MetroLink, for example, they can get from Wood Ranch to our Route 10 bus stop, and then transfer, and then easily get to the train station.
And this, and this is the last question. This app that people would have, I assume, I mean, they would, you would advertise, you would download it, it acts just as an Uber or Lyft app, where they put in credit card information, et cetera, is that?
Exactly. Pretty, essentially the same type of, type of app as those that you've seen, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gonzalez, I have just a couple of questions. This app, this software, has it been chosen yet? And if so, what are we looking at?
Yes, the software has been chosen. It is actually county-wide by VCTC, and that they did the procurement for all transit agencies. And so each agency has their choice to go with. It's RICO is the name of the software app. And it was selected probably in early summer, and that's been funded through VCTC.
I had a question about the number of vans. One, have we field-tested any of the vans, or have you got any data that shows how long they last with, you know, passengers onboard?
We've talked to other peer agencies, and they go approximately 120 miles for each vehicle. Of course, give or take, you know, with the heater and air conditioner on and driver while they drive, so.
And what do you think that equates to in hours of service?
Approximately about six to seven hours, roughly.
And how many people are on your design team to come up with this, this system? The planning team? The planning team to put the microtransit together? How many people are involved in that?
So RICO is, is the lead agency, the company that will be doing a study analysis and help us with the workshops and plan, and kind of determine where we're going to put our zones, how long the vehicle should be out. And then they'll have, they have reporting software that will tell you just where your demand is, or what your peak service demand is, I guess I should say. So it'll start with them, and then we'll have operations staff, we'll have our supervisors, our operators, of course, and then we'll also involve the community to kind of gauge, like I said, where, where they would like to see the service is at. Wood Ranch has been the popular one, obviously, that has been asking for, but we'll build on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this can be popular. Obviously, initially, you're going to have to evaluate, one, how the vans perform, no question, and, you know, kind of tweak the service routes and so on as we go. But I think it's a good thing, and we've talked about this before in our other meeting.
Yes.
But yeah, I think it's a good thing. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 31, informational
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of City Council. I want to, I want to express my gratitude for being given this opportunity to address you all tonight. My name is Abhishek Hume, and I'm a junior at Simi Valley High School. I hope to effectively provide all present with an update of the Simi Valley Youth Council's recent accomplishments and successes to come. Since the last report, we held elections for our Youth Council Secretary, which was postponed due to time constraints. After the election process, Tonvi Iju was selected as the 2024 to 2025 Youth Council Secretary. In addition, the Youth Council also selected the respective chairs and vice chairs for four committees. For the fundraising committee, Ethan Baugh and Nicole Kim were selected as chair and vice chair. For the outreach committee, Jaslin Kengura and Kalissa Rowe. For the teen wellness committee, Tonvi Iju and Ruth Mika Naveen. For the Youth Council, I mean, for the Youth Summit Committee, Kalissa Rowe and Sadie Rowe. A very successful Youth Council annual rock painting night was held on September 20th, where approximately 250 attendees painted rocks with inspirational messages of hope and kindness. Thank you to everyone who came to support our event. The Yogurtland fundraiser held the same night raised $200 for Hope of the Day, a nonprofit that supports suicide prevention. Also, a representative from ABC 7 News interviewed and filmed the Youth Council at Lemon Park distributing and hiding the rocks painted from the event. In addition to inspirational messages, suicide prevention resources were also listed on the back of each rock. This was a great start for the Youth Council, and we hope and plan to keep the success going. Next on our list of, sorry, excuse me. Next on our list of events for this year, we have the Youth Summit in conjunction with the Ranch of Simi Recreation and Park District, where students will come together to discuss issues they've directly or indirectly experienced in the community and develop possible solutions. The theme for this year is breaking barriers, which was chosen to highlight youth breaking down or working through issues that affect themselves and their communities. The summit's keynote speaker will be Brian Bushway, widely considered the world's best blind mountain biker. Mr. Bushway is certainly breaking barriers, and we look forward to him sharing his inspirational story and words of wisdom. With the information and solutions gathered from this event, the Youth Council will effectively create a plan to address and, address the concerns of our youth. We received 172 student registrations for the event, which will be held on October 11th, 2024, at the RSRPD Activity Center. Lastly, we have started to plan our annual Youth Town Hall in conjunction with the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library, where we encourage students to come, listen, and ask questions about serious issues in the youth community, with panelists of different backgrounds. Although the event topic and discussions are still, and details are still in discussion, we have brainstormed pros and cons of the previous events and solutions for the upcoming event. With educational activities and supportive events scheduled, we strive to keep the Council actively engaged in our community, and hope you'll continue to support our efforts. Please stay connected to stay informed by following us at Simi Valley Youth Council on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube, as well as at SVYC2929 on TikTok. Please feel free to attend our next meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, October 15th, at 5:00 PM at the Senior Center. Once again, it has been my honor to address the City Council of Simi Valley. Thank you for your time. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Any questions?
Councilmember Litzter.
Well done. Thank you very much for your report, and congratulations, 172 registrants?
Yeah.
That, that's actually a very good number. I know that-
We went very hard with outreach this year. We tried to do our best. We did word of mouth and everything, so.
Well done. Congratulations. And so that's, you said October 11th, so that's this week, this coming up, this Friday. If someone still wanted to come, is it too late?
I think it is a little too late, as we had a deadline for signups, and we also need a waiver and registration, which was done last Friday, so.
Got it.
It'd be a little too late, you know?
So they'll just try to come next, next year, after they feel, see how wonderful it is. Well, well done. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report.
Once again, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. During this agenda item number four, the City Council will hear public statements for the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called to speak during agenda item number six, which is a continuation item, or continuation of agenda item number four. Agenda item number four and agenda item number six are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, item four, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we will begin the public statements.
Please proceed.
Joanne Colgar.
... company to the city of Simi Valley. I'm a brand ambassador for Bloom Internet, and I'm sure many of your residents have noticed all of the fiber that's been taking place, to being installed in their neighborhoods. And we're one of the two companies that can connect the residents of Simi Valley to that fiber. One thing that a lot of residents needs to understand, though, is the fact that Fiber City goes out and they do the installation of the fiber, and they put it out at the curb side, but then we have to wait for Edison to come through and power it up. Also, as soon as the, the railroad just got their permit, in order to connect the two fiber towers on each side of the railroad, and when that happens, we can light up to anywhere from 700 to 1,000 homes immediately. So we're really hoping for that to happen. We've tried to streamline the, the program for the Simi Valley residents with my company. We do a direct install. The fiber, the fiber is called, pulled directly from the curb to the home. We don't charge anything for that. We also provide the modem and the router for free to the residents of Simi Valley, for as long as they're our customer. We don't have any contracts or cancellation fees, and we have a flat fee of $65 for life, for as long as the client remains a customer of ours. And that's really all I wanted to say this evening. I thank you for your time.
Anyway, I hope not to be too negative, but my name is Phil, and I live in district number one, and not continuously, but I've lived in Simi Valley since before it was incorporated as a city. Those are back in the days of roaming the hills of Mar Ranch with our BB guns. But anyway, the topic is a public protest, and I'll give you my three minutes Cliff Notes version. Hopefully, it's fully understandable. So as Dan Bongino would say, get out your pens, pencils, and notebooks. Some important things need to be said, including the topic of protest policy. For context, my father was a World War II veteran. He completed his degree as mechanical engineer from the University of Southern California, then entered the war as a commissioned lieutenant. Wow, I've got a bloody nose for some reason. I think it's been the heat or something. This just happened the last couple of days. Excuse me. Anyway, my father was commissioned as a lieutenant after finishing his degree at USC as a mechanical engineer. He had three on personnel on which-
I'm sorry. Do you want, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt for a second. With the bloody nose, would you like to come back after, and come back later in this cycle? Or do you want to keep speaking with your bloody nose?
Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to just wrap it up now.
Okay.
I got a short period of time. I don't mind it if you don't, hopefully.
Okay. Just want to be-
I mean, this is really strange and unusual, but-
Just want to be responsive to you. Okay. I'm sorry.
Anyway, here we go. I'll do my best. Anyway, this is like I said, for context of where I'm coming from as an individual. He was deployed and stationed in Okinawa for the remainder of the war for repair and rescue. His older brother was a World War II veteran, also. He completed his degree in mechanical engineering at the University of Southern California. And then he went to Mac Dell Air Force Base in Florida and trained as a pilot. The United States wasn't yet in the war, so he was a US pilot on loan to the United Kingdom. He was one of those pilots who flew 30 successful bombing missions into Germany under the command of Winston Churchill. Later, he went to the Pentagon and Korea as inspector general for the Korean War. The point is that it is a kind of in my DNA to have an extremely low level of tolerance for BS. Sorry, but I just kind of put this together. A sense of obligation to the great generation, World War II heroes and veterans, and a recent conversation with a tired Ventura County judge prompted me to speak to the City Council. Approximately 16 years ago, flaws in the Simi Valley Police Department formal complaint system became obvious. Mechanisms to collect receipts on the issues were put in place at that time based on advice from the Ventura County District Attorney's Detective's Office. Back when Mike Sedell was retiring as city manager, he was wise to select McCann as the new police chief. Unfortunately, he did not thoroughly clean house. During the last four-year election cycle, that guy from the Simi Valley law enforcement went out to the corner of Cochran Street and Sycamore Drive with his soapbox, figuratively speaking, to pop off enabling and advocating for a criminal organization. His sworn duty was to have been a few hundred yards down Cochran Street-
Excuse me. Excuse me. You're already a minute over time. I am sorry. I'm trying, I do care, but we'll limit it to three minutes per speaker. I'm sorry.
No bloody nose time, or?
Well, I gave you a minute. I'm just trying to be considerate, because it's, you know, everybody else is going to want more than time. Can you wrap it up in about 30 seconds?
Yeah, I can wrap it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I will. Thanks for telling me to speed up. Okay. Anyway, his sworn duty was to be a few hundred yards down Cochran Street, citing and arresting non-residents blocking traffic of residents attempting to go about their daily business. The level of cringe was, there was a level of cringe where the so-called news director of the Ventura County population was asked to explain why they sued the victims of the borderline incident in Thousand Oaks. What should have happened is the city manager should have driven out to the corner of Cochran and Sycamore and told the guy, he's also known as Simi Valley's homegrown Barney Fife, to hand him his weapons, hand him his badge. He should have told the guy not to return to the station. His personal belongings would be mailed to him. For the current four-year election cycle, running through the end of January of next year, 2025, all employees of the city, and especially on the police force, law enforcement, should need, need to know and understand that putting a politically timed clown show as a representative of the city will result in immediate termination.
All right, I'm going to have to stop you now.
And I'll be back.
Thank you. All right.
Well, that's one to follow. I'm, by the way, I'm almost speechless. You got me there. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for letting me speak. I'll try and be as brief as I possibly can. I apologize for running out at the last meeting. I had an appointment I thought I had to get to. The, and I'm bummed that I left so early, because I missed the presentation about the food bank. And if you remember, I asked a question at the last meeting, where I'd come back and I said, I wanted to know where the free land came from, where that idea originated from. And now, I'm just dumbfounded that we're talking about, we can't finance meals on wheels, but yet we can give away, give away free land. The common sense is beside me. But I also wanted to talk about, I wanted to hear an update from you guys about the ADA nightmare, about the sidewalk, and are we going to attend to that? Is there something already in place? If so, I'd like to hear about it. If nothing's in place, how long is it going to take us to address it? Another one, real quick, the mayor and I were asked at the debate about our homelessness. I went to our city website, and I didn't get very much information. I got a lot of different places I could go seek more information, but not a lot of solid information. So I'd like to ask the council, what is our city's current stance towards homelessness, and what are we doing to prepare for the increased numbers of homelessness that we're getting every day? Let's see. Oh, on my last one, believe it or not, I said, how do we go about trying to get something going where we could have free transit for seniors and students? And it just so happens, we heard a report on the transit. So that would be great to hear about. And the last, but not least, the, the forum was the only place where we have a venue for open debate. Could we possibly maybe have every six months, an open forum city hall that the city could put on, and we could have the residents and the citizens come in and actually engage with you guys? Because I know I'd certainly like the opportunity, and I know you make yourselves available, but it shouldn't, again, you hear me yap about transparency? What better way to get it out there? So, all right, I'll hush. Thank you.
Mayor Thomas, City Council, City Manager, and City Attorney. First, I'd like to mention Noi, a fellow teacher and friend to my daughter Jamie, who one year ago attended a concert in Israel. Noi did not survive the concert as a result of the horrific massacre perpetrated by Hamas on October 7th, 2023. Today, I pray for Noi and all that have been devastated by this tragic conflict. I pray for the release of the hostages and peace and security for Israel and the Palestinian people who choose peace on this solemn anniversary. With that, I'll transgress to welcome to elections 2024. I must express my disappointment in seeing a campaign ad in the Simi Acorn on Saturday that listed our entire Simi Valley City Council as endorsing Dr. Ron for Simi Valley Unified School District Board. I'm pretty sure all five of you heard Dr. Ron say Friday, September 27th, at the Simi Valley Republican Party Candidate Forum at the VFW Military Museum, that he absolutely stands behind his letter of 2022 that he sent to his veterinary customers. You all received a copy of that letter. I challenge all five of this City Valley, Simi Valley's Council to renounce their endorsement of Dr. Ron. The camp- The campaign ad totally comes across as the Simi Valley City Council endorses Dr. Ron, highly unethical and perhaps, Mr. City Attorney, a violation of the Brown Act. You all have your vote, but to support an individual to make policy for our children's education who supports move the needle, whose belief states, "Social indoctrination at the K through 12 levels is being used to brainwash our children into false narratives that promote hatred to our country and each other." Is that what our city council believes of our Simi Valley Unified School District Board? Since I only have three minutes, a few other choice Dr. Ron quotes. Where did the flu go in 2020? Why did COVID not affect and wipe out homelessness? Why a goat and a piece of fruit tested positive? When you return your vote in an envelope, you are waiving your right to a secret ballot. We do know masks can harm people, and the most harm can come to our children. Ask yourselves, do conspiracy theories really have a place on our local public school board that can set policy for our children? The board is a nonpartisan position. Our city council has most definitely made it a Simi Valley Republican Party agenda to elect all Republicans to the Simi Valley Unified School District Board this November. Please receive your support for Dr. Ron for Simi Valley Unified School District Board, based on his words that I sincerely hope you do not approve of. Thank you. John Lapper, Simi Valley.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 4A, city council comments regarding public statements.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joanne, I didn't get your last name. One of the things that's going to make Simi Valley great into the future and attract more businesses here is that fiber backbone. It's nice to know that we're actually going to get some people on that fiber backbone sooner, hopefully rather than later. And I'm glad that we're going to have competitive businesses that will keep an honest price for getting on that. Phil, I am sorry that it was a disjointed thing with the bloody, I didn't get it, I didn't follow. And so if you do come back and give us another three minutes, I would like to hear what you have to say, but I apologize.
Yeah, I was trying to keep it short, and I realized it was pretty, and that's why I labeled it, because I just tried to make it clear. And I had points to make, and I didn't really know how long it was going to take, but I appreciate it.
Mr. Shaw, open dialogue is an awesome thing, and when you become elected, it becomes a challenging thing. And so I encourage you to go in your studies for your candidacy to study the Brown Act and find out what we could and could not do in terms of public forums and such. So it's not as easy as just saying, yeah, hey, we're going to do it. But read up on that, and there's a way, but it's not the simplest thing in the world. And Mr. Lapper, thank you for the remembrance of the October 7 tragedy. It is a solemn day, and, boy, I hope we get peace in the world. And that's all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and speaking again. I have been asked quite a bit about the internet, so that was nice to hear from Joanne, and we can start to inform our community members a little bit more. Phil, again, I am your actually District 1 representative. Feel free to reach out to me. I'd love to meet with you and figure out exactly what it is we want to discuss.
Just call the meeting in person?
Yes, we can do that. So if you reach out to City Hall, I'll gladly get back to you. I'm Dee Dee Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. I didn't do a little while.
Okay, thank you.
I'm at your office.
Yes, you can call the city manager's office. Thank you. Mike, it's always a pleasure to have you out here. Great, good ideas coming from you back and forth. I'm glad we did get the transit information out there, and the meals on wheels we're working on. The city manager is working on that to see what we can do, so we're getting there. And open discussion, again, like our mayor Pro Tim said, there are certain restrictions that apply there, but maybe there's something we can do a little bit more open also. Mr. Lapper, I was not at the VFW museum, even though you indicated in both your letter and here tonight. I was not there. And thank you for bringing up the Israel tragedy and the remembrance of that. Appreciate it.
In regards to meeting with people in the public, I can tell you that I did try to have a town hall, and I think we had maybe 10 people show up.
It was about 20. By the time it finished.
Yeah, and it's hard because, you know, how to advertise it, I put it through social media. I really don't know any other way to get it out there. We had good discussions. I wish it involved more. I'd like to do it more often if I thought people would actually show up. And then, in regard to politics and someone's comment earlier today, I will say that I personally am on an agenda to try to spread this message, and that is, let's try to give everybody an understanding of their point of view, respect theirs, and ask them to respect yours back. Politics has gotten way too negative. It seems like the norm is to attack the opponent rather than to support the person that you want to get elected, and I think that we need to see more of that. And I absolutely am doing that. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted for the public testimony item 5 for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their names and community of residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to this item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to this item. The report of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made as part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the city council's decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Item 5A, a public hearing to consider request from the City Ventures Home Building LLC for a general plan amendment GPA-2022-0001 to change the land use designation from general commercial and medium density residential to high density residential. Zone change Z-S-2022-0003 from commercial plan development CPD and residential medium density RM to residential high density RH. A plan development permit PD-S-2022-0012. A vesting tentative map VTT-2024-0001. An affordable housing agreement AHA-2022-0002 to construct a new 70-unit, three-story, multifamily residential condominium development with 10 affordable units located at 1845 Oak Road. And the reporting program, introduction of an ordinance, nope, and the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, introduction of an ordinance and an adoption of resolutions. The readings are as follows. Ordinance number 1360, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Simi Valley approving a change of zone classification Z-S-2022-0003 from commercial plan development CPD and residential medium density RM to residential high density RH for a property located at 1845 Oak Road. An adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Resolution number 2024-38, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley approving a general plan amendment GPA-2022-0001. Plan development permit PD-S-2022-0012. Investing tentative map VTT-2024-0001 to allow construction of a new 70-unit, three-story, multifamily residential condominium development located at 1845 Oak Road and adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And resolution number 2024-39, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley approving an affordable housing agreement AHA-2022-0002 with the City Ventures Home Building LLC for the development of 70 townhomes, including 10 one-bedroom units to be reserved for moderate-income households located at 1845 Oak Road. And Deputy Environmental Services Director Sean Gibson and Senior Planner Elizabeth Richardson are here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two. On Friday, October 4, around 5:00 PM, after studying the design packet for the project, I wanted to try and understand the drainage issue, including slopes, elevation, and distance. I took one of the design pages and proceeded to the project site. I drove down the private drive to the Arroyo and back, and then parked at the main entrance of the school. Since it was locked, I stood outside my car with the design and was visualizing the housing units, where the housing units would go. At this time, I noticed a gentleman who was putting his trash cans away, obviously curious about what I was doing. So I introduced myself, and he stated that he was Brad, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten his last name and his wife Bobby. They are the owners of the property directly to the south of the project. When I told him what I was doing, he shared he was in contract with Sal and was interested in the outcome of the hearing. He also thought the decision was done. I shared that that initial presentation was to the planning commission, and we have to now see it at the council. I mentioned to him that I was most curious about the drainage issue and that I was disappointed I cannot get into the locked gate to see it. He then offered to let me look from his side of the yards. We walked up to the west property line, and I was able to see over the wall, and he described where and how far the water backed up during rains. He also shared that there may be a drain area that the firefighters come and open up when it rains, and it drains into the parking lot to the apartments to the west. I thank him for his time and encourage him to come to the meeting tonight. My second ex parte communication, I was called by Gary Seaton this afternoon. He shared the applicant's impression of B-13, and I told him we should not discuss it much further, and it'll be a topic of tonight's conversation. And I see that Mr. Seaton is here, and so we will be, I'm sure, talking about that
Mr. Mayor, I did meet with the applicants on September 30.
Yeah, I was just going to mention the same thing. I met with the applicants on September 30 because I was by myself with the city manager. I didn't know if any other council members had either, so just mentioning it.
I also met with the applicant for a brief introduction to the project.
Because I was out of town, I met with them just previously, a couple hours ago, with Mr. Gary Seaton and Mr. Eric Miller and Phil, the CEO of City Ventures.
And since we're doing that, I had the same meeting as well.
Staff can begin with your report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. Tonight's public hearing is for a proposed 70-unit, for-sale townhouse project located at the corner of Los Angeles Avenue and Oak Road. Back on April 15, 2022, the applicant initially came to the city council for their general plan amendment pre-screening request, which the city council granted. Of the 70 units, the applicant is proposing to provide 10 affordable units in exchange for development incentives in order to better design the buildings for the unique shape of the project site. However, since there is a requested general plan amendment and zone change, and not part of our housing element opportunity sites, the project is not subject to the Housing Accountability Act, and the city council does have the discretion to approve, disapprove, or modify the project as presented tonight. Our senior planner, Elizabeth Richardson, and deputy director of Public Works, Brent Seymour, will continue with our presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be reviewing a request for a new multifamily townhome project. The project consists of a general plan amendment, zone change, plan development permit, vesting tentative map, and an affordable housing agreement. The plan development permit and vesting tentative map is for a new 70-unit townhouse development, and an affordable housing agreement is necessary for the 10 affordable units set aside for moderate-income qualified buyers and the request for waivers. The project is located on Oak Road near the intersection of Los Angeles Avenue and Yosemite Avenue. The site is comprised of four parcels, and the total site area is 3.61 acres. Surrounding uses include residential to the north, Ventura County Fire Department and an apartment building to the west, commercial buildings and a mobile home park to the east, and two residential homes to the south. The site is the former Phoenix Ranch School and is developed with school buildings, parking lots, a swimming pool, play areas, and landscaping, all of which will be demolished. This is a view of the existing site from Los Angeles Avenue looking south on Oak Road. To the right is the Ventura County Fire Department Fire Station, and to the left is the commercial The project site has two land uses, general commercial and medium density residential. The requested amendment will change the entire site to high-density residential. The project is also split-zoned into commercial plan development and residential medium density. The proposed zoning is residential high-density. And the purpose of the land use amendment and zone change is to allow residential development at a density exceeding currently what is currently allowed on the project site. The portion of the site zoned RM only allows nine single-family residences, and residential development is not allowed on the CPD-zoned portion of the site shown here in red. The land use and zone changes allow residential development consistent with the surrounding townhouse development with a density range of 10.1 to 20 dwelling units per acre, which on this site would allow 73 units. The project is proposing 70 dwelling units. The site will be developed with a new 70-unit, for-sale townhouse community. There will be 11 buildings, and all will be three stories. The units are a mix of one, three, and four bedrooms, and range in size between 725 square feet and 1,710 square feet. 10 of the one-bedroom units will be affordable at the moderate-income category. The site will be accessed from Los Angeles Avenue along Oak Road and Shank Road. 168 parking spaces are provided, and each unit will have its own one- or two-car garage. Additional parking will be provided on driveways and common street parking within the development. Amenities will include active outdoor spaces, a barbecue area, picnic tables, and benches. The buildings are designed in a progressive Spanish architectural style. Progressive Spanish is inspired by traditional Spanish architectural elements such as red tile roofs, stucco walls, gabled roofs, and simple ornamentation. The proposed design uses stucco and fiber cement composite siding, pitched gable roofs with flat roof tiles. Additional design details include recessed windows, balconies, vent pipe details, and simple articulated openings such as arched doorways. The development has two different color schemes but keeps a cohesive design with the same stucco color walls, metal windows and doors, and roof tiles on all the buildings. The applicant is providing 10 affordable housing units for moderate-income qualified homebuyers. This qualifies the project for a density bonus increase, modified parking requirements, one concession, and multiple waivers, as long as those waivers do not impose a life or safety hazard. In general, denial of a concession or waiver requires findings that would have a specific adverse impact on the health, safety, or physical environment for which there is no mitigation, or that it is not required because it would not preclude construction of the project. or that it is not required because it would not preclude construction of the project. The applicant is not requesting a density bonus or concessions, and they have requested seven waivers. The requested waivers include decreased front, side, and rear yard setbacks, decreased building separation, decreased single-car garage dimension, and reduced enriched landscaping. Staff has found these requests to be reasonable due to the unique lot configuration and the general consistency with the city's development standards. The waiver to reduce a front yard setback is for the portion of the building over 15 feet in height and is reduced from 40 feet to 18 feet 6 inches. The red triangle delineates a small portion of the building that does not comply with the required front yard setback. The requested setback waiver will reduce the side yard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet. In black is the 15-foot side yard setback, and in red is the requested 10-foot setback. The rear yard setback is requested to be reduced from 20 feet to 10 feet. In black is the requested 20-foot setback, and in red is the requested 10-foot setback. The request to decrease the building separation is for the two buildings located on the north end of the project site, fronting Oak Road. The required building separation is 20 feet, and the requested building separation is 15 feet. Single-car garages are required to have a minimum width of 12 feet. The requested waiver will reduce the interior width to 10 feet 10 inches. Along Los Angeles Avenue, an enriched parkway is required at an average width of 27 feet 6 inches along the front property line. A waiver is requested to reduce the width between 16 feet 6 inches and 18 feet 6 inches. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. Based on the conclusion of the initial study, the project could have potentially significant impacts on biological resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, noise, and tribal and cultural resources. 15 mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project that would reduce the potentially significant impacts to an insignificant level. Next, Brent Seamer with Public Works is here to present the drainage conversation included in the staff report.
Thank you. To clarify staff's position regarding condition B-13, the property currently ponds drainage along the southwestern edge of the property, shown in blue. To develop this area, the applicant proposes to collect and pump all this drainage to the southeastern corner of the site. The pumped water will be brought to the surface by a bubbler at the southeastern corner of the site, and knockouts are proposed at the southerly screen wall for emergency purposes should the detention and pump system fail. The proposed plan constitutes a change of historic flow as identified in the environmental document and triggers the need for condition B-13 to require a stormwater acceptance deed or easement from the downstream property owner.
And Planning Commission recommends the City Council introduce ordinance number 1360, approving the zone change, adopt resolution number 2024-38, approving the general plan amendment, plan development permit, investing tentative map, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Staff recommends the City Council adopt resolution number 2024-39, approving the affordable housing agreement. And this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Do we have any questions of staff from the City Council members?
Thank you. These are for sale units, condominiums, et cetera. Does currently, do we, does the city have affordable condominium arrangements, agreements already? I mean, we have it on single housing, we have on rentals. Is this, would this be our first condominium complex that we would have affordable agreements on? Do we know?
Councilmember Lister, no, there's at least two for-sale projects, and there may be a few more, but there's a senior for-sale project in Wood Ranch and also one at Stern's in Los Angeles, to name two.
That are condominium for-sale projects?
That's correct.
Very good. Okay. I just wanted to be, just want to know the history of that. Okay. Thank you. Could you, you just briefly described, Brent, I think, the item 13, whatever that clause. Help me understand staff's position on the problems with what they're proposing.
So staff looks at historic drainage, and when patterns change as crossing a neighbor, then we would trigger the request for the an easement document from the neighbor, accepting that change of drainage. Primarily, our concern in this case is that the drainage, you can see is, it all leads to the blue area where the currently ponds. Their plan would be is to pick up that drainage, detain it, however, bring it over to the east side of the property where you see proposed bubblers. So that is a change in historic drainage. The other concern is that the drainage ultimately would be going to the Roos Simi. We don't see that happening in the near future. And then finally, that one of the concerns would be is the unreliability of any pump system. It cannot be bulletproof. As much as, as an engineer, I would tell you, I can engineer it that way. And so the concern would be is flow coming through the proposed knockouts should that system not function correctly. So we're asking for a document essentially from the neighbor to the south, confirming that and accepting that.
So, and I guess I'm trying to understand. You're saying, so what, so your desire, if they were to do this perfectly, they would have permission from the neighbor to the south to pump? Or permission to go ahead and put a pipe through their property elsewhere? What is it exactly that the easement, that you, that the staff thinks would fix this?
So it could take two different forms. One, the property owner to the south could accept a surface flow across the property, just as it is proposed now.
Which, and just to be clear, it already has, it does or does not already have surface flow right now?
It already has surface flow crossing the southern property and even to the west. Is the direction of the flow. You can see where there's a little small arrow, red arrow. The whole property goes from east to west, but the drainage would now be by a pump taking all that water to the east side of the property. So now it would be in a totally different location, requiring the property owner to accept at that location. Another way that typically would happen, if you were to put it in a storm drain, you would always get an easement across your neighbor because you have to build the storm drain. So those would be two different options that would be typically followed.
Can I jump in with a question?
Sure, sure.
I have similar line of questionings. So we pump the water up to the Oak Road and get the easement. Help me understand what a bubbler is? And does it just bring it to the surface, and now the water runs where it runs?
That is correct.
Okay. I, having just visited the site, I have a concern about that design efficiency, that it would run downhill into the neighbor's property as opposed to down the road because there's no V-ditch. There's no way to guide it down the road. Would it, would an easement be requiring that sort of a directional to force the flow in a direction?
So if an easement was provided or a document accepting flow from the neighbor, they would be accepting the uncontrolled manner of that bubbler?
Sure, go ahead.
On the west side of the property, there's a note to an X great inlet. I was, I was told that there's something on that side of the property is where the fire department would come, clear out, knock out, and that the flow would then go to the west into the parking lot of the apartment building. Is that one of the solutions? And why isn't that an additional, a continuous solution to this?
I have anecdotal information that the property was ponding, and the fire department was asked to help relieve that ponding and put a hole through the screen wall at that time. That's only anecdotal that I have. I haven't observed the site. So I don't have any more information on that. And the applicant isn't proposing to put any knockouts or drainage to the west.
Okay. And just, I couldn't, I was going to try and get to that apartment building in the west, but it was gated. Do you know if that's from the parking lot? Is that all surface flow out towards the Arroyo? Or does it go into a storm drain system?
You're speaking to the property adjacent to the west, how that is drained? I believe it pretty much drains to the street, to Yosemite, then falls Yosemite into the Arroyo.
Okay, thank you.
Well, actually, I'm, I'll wait for more questions after we hear from the applicant. That's fine. Thank you.
Then I had one more question on, on page eight of the staff report, there was some Rena math that I didn't understand on the affordable units. I'm trying to figure out where they, where they placed. They said they're going to do 80% LMI, but it looked like it was in the wrong place on the chart. Now I'm trying to get to my. It has all 70 units in the moderate, but the 10 were up to 80% AMI, I said LMI, AMI. And wouldn't 10 then go over into that allocation?
All 70 units are moderate or above. The 10 units are the designated as affordable, but the other 60 are definitely moderate and above. So that's the, that's the minimum category it will be in. So the other 60 will be moderate or above moderate.
Okay. Not how it reads, but okay. Okay. I would love to hear from the applicant as well.
Well, I'll admit, the whole drainage thing is over my head because I don't really understand any of it. But other than the concept, it sounds to me like a lot of what you're asking is an approval from the neighbor to the south, which apparently that neighbor has already said that he won't. So do we have a solution?
I have not had any communication from the neighbor to the south. Again, it's anecdotal, what I've, what I've heard from either the current neighbor or from the apparently developer that has an option on that. So I haven't been presented with any information one way or another in that regard, except just verbally. So the important part to Public Works is basically notifying an owner of something that's going to change on their property, then accepting it and providing that as information to be able to proceed with the project.
Mayor, I do have one more question, too, when you're done.
We'll go right ahead. I'm going to look for, hearing from the applicant.
Okay. Actually, this is a question for staff before applicant, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
So do we have any developments in our, in our city where drainage is pumped? Would this be the first time that we ever have drainage pumped? And are, do we use pumping for sewage, sewer and other things as well?
To answer that question in backwards order, pumping for sewage is a little bit easier because you can turn off the water and you shut, shut off the problem. Where pumping stormwater is you can't turn off the rain. It will be a continuing problem. So there's a little difference in that. There are projects that do pump sewage, a number of those. As far as pumping drainage, there have been very, very few. Most of them have been in the far past that we've had. Some of them specifically have emergency flow across the neighbor. They may already have either an easement or a pipe discharge that's historic across the neighbor, some sort of pre-existing historic flow that they would rely on. Most of the projects that I could find would be perhaps commercial with a, a single property owner, but I could not find anything with a NHOA multiple owners that would have to work together to maintain such a system. So it's not, doesn't happen at all often, but we are starting to see, probably in the last few years, a lot more of these properties that do have this issue, and it's, it's coming forward more often.
And isn't an HOA like one entity that's responsible? I recognize, I mean, isn't that ultimately what an HOA is?
If you would beg a little time from me, as far as an HOA responding to it, I, I'm responsible for verifying that every HOA, every property owner provides annual reports of inspection and maintenance of their facilities. Currently, HOAs are not very responsible, are very difficult to have respond. I probably get maybe 25% each year responding. The difficulty is, is your management companies will change. Institutional memory will disappear. The president will constantly change. They'll spend the money to do what I ask them to do, then they'll get voted out because they spent too much money. So I get very inconsistent responses from HOAs. Individual owners, I get much better. But there's just that intrinsic loss of institutional memory or motivation with an HOA.
Interesting. Thank you.
We good?
For now.
All right.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the hearing. Does any, does the applicant wish to be heard on this matter?
As Eric is setting up here, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Phil Kerr. I'm the CEO of City Ventures, and I wanted to be here tonight. Relative to the specific issue on the drainage, I just want to make sure we take some time and just let you know I'm available to help with that discussion, as well as our civil engineer is here as well. Eric's going to run through the project, talk specifically about some of the items relative to that. If it's okay with you, I'll come up and join that discussion just to be available to answer any questions on it as well.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, council members. My name is Eric Miller. I am the Director of Development at City Ventures, and I'm excited for this opportunity to present and discuss our proposed development project located at 1845 Oak Road. As Phil just mentioned, our civil engineer is here tonight. But I also wanted to let you know that our architect is here in case there are any design-related questions. I would like to thank city staff, more specifically Elizabeth, for the detailed staff report. As she mentioned, this site is previously the Phoenix Ranch Elementary School, located adjacent to the Ventura County Fire Station. Now, before I dive into the project, I'd like to provide a little history as to who City Ventures is. Founded in 2009, City Ventures is one of the leading infill development companies in the state of California. Since inception, we've been an all-electric solar homebuilder focusing on underutilized properties with the opportunity to redevelop them into housing. We've completed residential and mixed-use projects in 90 cities, entitling more. more than 150 communities, building and selling 10,000 homes throughout the state. As an infill developer, we are always building in areas that have previously been developed. So we know we're gonna have neighbors. We're sensitive to those neighbors, and we do everything we can in the design and planning phase to limit the impacts to any neighbors that we have. Here are just a few past City Ventures townhome projects with similar architectural style to the one that we are proposing tonight and that you would see throughout the city of Simi Valley. Taking a step back, you could see we started due diligence on this project three years ago with our pre-screening city council hearing in April of 2022. We've gone through countless meetings with city staff. We've designed various iterations of our site plan, and we've worked extremely hard through the, the different submittal requirements and site constraints to get us here before you this evening. Again, I'd like to thank city staff for their time and effort on this project thus far. Uh, this proposed project will not only bring much-needed housing, but it will also be a great addition to the city of Simi Valley. Here's an aerial view of our site. It sits just east of Yosemite, uh, off of Los Angeles. Directly across the street is the Vons and Starbucks Shopping Center with various restaurants and fast food chains within walking distance. Also, within close proximity to the site is Simi Valley High School, Knoll's Elementary, and a nearby park. As mentioned, the site was formerly the Phoenix Ranch Elementary School, which was relocated in 2021, and over the last three years has sat vacant. The site consists of empty classrooms, amenities such as a soccer field, playground, uh, a swimming pool, and an open piece of undeveloped land. Oak Road itself is in pretty bad shape and could also use some work. Directly west are the Sage, Sage Apartments, and directly east are the Briarwood Community, both which are zoned residential high, leaving our site the perfect housing redevelopment as opportunity. And it also supports the required upzoning that we would need for our project. I won't dive into the project details too much, as it was outlined pretty well in the staff report. Um, I do want to mention that once this community is built out, it will be managed and maintained by homeowners association. So all, uh, exteriors of the buildings, perimeter walls, streets, uh, common open space, uh, roofs, and any equipment designed for the benefit of the community will be managed and maintained by the homeowners association. Um, it was called out that this project was, we, we were able to build 73 homes. We built 70. Uh, we didn't want to just max out the density on this site. Uh, we do really take into consideration the livability for the, the future residents. So that was, that was heavily involved in our design process. Um, the three-story attached townhomes is really geared towards the missing middle. You know, there's, I believe the median home price in Simi Valley is roughly 850,000. So with these homes, you can target, um, or make it a little more affordable, um, or attainable, I should say. I know the affordable word is used differently. So this slide shows our current site plan that we've worked very hard with city staff, and that meets all city expectations. This gives you a better idea of building layouts, streets, landscaping, our open space, um, and both entrances off of East Los Angeles and Shank Road. This side is our typical building elevations, which was, as mentioned in the staff report, we went with a traditional Spanish architecture, um, that you see throughout the city. You'll notice the elevation popouts and the pitched roofs, and really that was intended to give these units more of the detached, single-family home feel to them. So in previous conversations, staff did have, uh, raised concerns with the drainage. So I just wanted to spend a couple minutes discussing that. Please note that these areas in blue are not, to be exact, more just for conversational. Um, but as our civil engineer started designing the site, he quickly identified that there is an existing issue with the current site's drainage pattern. Part of the site drains to the southeast, which surface flows down Oak Road, with the rest of the site draining to and ponding in the southwest corner. This was corroborated by the property owner to the south, who's acknowledged and confirmed water seeps into his backyard during heavy rain events. Without redevelopment, this drainage problem will persist unresolved. City Ventures is proposing to redevelop the site, which will also improve the current's drainage conditions. This slide is intended to show the site's current conditions overlaid onto our civil utility plan. The proposed storm drain design will reduce the amount of water that drains to the southwest corner of the site, and then manage that water to improve the drainage and protect against any impacts. The system is designed with a private pump facility engineered for operational reliability. The site's drainage will be split in half, with the north half gravity flowing out to East Los Angeles Avenue, and the system capturing all of the water on the southern half, southern portion of the site, uh, and treating it, uh, through underground piping and re, and through underground piping to Oak Road, where it will be slowly discharged and continue surface flowing to the south. I'd like to call up our civil engineer to speak a little more technically to the system.
Good evening, council. Um, I'm Dane McDougall. I'm a registered civil engineer. I did the drainage report for the tentative track map, and I'll try not to, um, bore everyone with too many technical details because it, it is a little bit, um, complicated with the terms and everything, but I think one thing that, um, the city and us agree with is we do need to maintain that historical drainage pattern. It's always good to find that we have that, that common ground, and all we're talking about is where does the water go in the existing condition? And I've been out to the site myself several times. Um, it's pretty hard when you're standing out there to figure out where the water goes. Um, we even got a water truck to go out there and dump water in drains to look where it went. It's a pretty, um, flat site, but in the slide that we had up earlier, where you could see the ponding that's happening in the, in the southwest corner there, I think it's important to note that what we're not proposing to do is just take all that water and just pump it into Oak Road. There's about 18 CFS in the 100-year storm that's going to that corner. And the pump, the solution that we've proposed to not inundate Oak Road with drainage is to add detention. There's about 9,000 cubic feet of underground detention, uh, throughout the site. And what's happening is, is the water goes down to the southwest corner like it naturally wants to. It's being slowly released out to Oak Road at 0.79 CFS. And that's what the existing flow rate is in Oak Road. So our goal was to maintain the existing flow to Oak Road and detain the rest. So again, significant amount of detention pipe has been added to the project. And then, um, there was a comment brought up about reliability. When you have a, a pump station, like a sewer, for example, um, you know, you, you really can't actually shut off the water in a sewer lift station. I mean, that's the whole city. I mean, that wastewater is coming. And so the only thing that you can really do is you can add redundant pumps so that if pumps fail, you have backup pumps. If the power goes out, you have backup generation, and that's really all that you can do. And that's what we've proposed to do now. When we first started the project, we didn't initially have that. We kind of designed what I would call a more standard pump system, but, um, over the last three years and talking to Brent, we've, we've, uh, built and suspended it with road, with redundancy and backup generation. So it's a pretty robust pump system. And then to top that off, those wall knockouts, um, they're there in case, you know, everything fails. If somebody somehow ripped out the storm drain detention system, if the pump's gone, uh, the 18 CFS is going through the wall knockouts, just like it does today. And the important part with that is, that's why no one's homes will be flooded. That's why it's not a property, uh, damage issue. That's a, you know, health and safety standard that we do in engineering is protect property and, and structures. So, um, you know, with those things, I feel pretty confident, confident that we've designed a, you know, a good system that's not gonna create problems for, for the city or complaints. Um, and,
I also do, did want to point out as part of the design, we have included an underground storm drain stub at the southeast property line on Oak Road. This allows for, uh, future connections if the properties to the south are developed in the future. Um, City Ventures has also agreed to provide an additional stub in the southwest corner to provide multiple points of connection and allow for flexibility for any future development to the south. The city has the ability to add a condition of approval if a, if the development to the south was to move forward, to ensure that that connection is made. If the connection is made, then the need for the pump on our site would go away, and the pump could be removed altogether. We have been in recent communication with the developer to the south, so we will continue to communicate and coordinate together. Um, our civil engineering firm is also their civil engineering firm, so we feel confident that, you know, there is a way to design project, both projects independently, but that work together. So as Dane mentioned, it's a redundant system. If, if one pump was to fail to go, if one pump was failed to start, the other one's automatically triggered. Anytime there's a rain event, the pumps automatically switch over, so one's not working harder than the other. And if there's 30 days without rain, the system automatically flushes itself out to avoid clogging. Per the city's request, we've agreed to provide a emergency, uh, backup power source, as well as submitting an operations maintenance manual and emergency operation plan that meets the satisfaction to the public works. These will ensure inspections, maintenance, and repair take place for the pump facility. And that is on top of the, what would already be included in the homeowners management company, yearly, uh, budgets and allocated reserves for the same type of maintenance, inspection, and repairs for these type of facilities. This system is a common design system that City Ventures has successfully implemented in other cities, um, that complies with the health and safety codes. Um, I went back through our library. Over the last one to two years, we've successfully built and designed similar systems in cities such as Long Beach, Commerce, El Cajon, Morgan Hill, Nevada, and we are currently working with the city of Santee on a similar system. I then went back through the conditions of approval. None of those cities were, had the same concerns as Simi Valley, nor required any of the additional mitigation measures that we've agreed to for this project. The city's confirmed sewer lift stations are allowed, um, in the city. As mentioned, there's similar maintenance and inspections and repairs that the homeowners associations are responsible for on those systems. To address the future liability, City Ventures has come to an agreement with the city attorney, um, to indemnify the city of any future liability claims. To take it a step further, the city attorney asked that all future homeowners also indemnify the city, which we've agreed to. And I do want to point out that having our city, or having our legal attorney reach out to the city attorney, uh, is not our typical, it's not our standard. This was just to provide all the information, put it all on the table, and just make it more of a collaboration. Um, so I just want to make sure that's noted. To sum it all up, our proposed storm drain design system is a significant improvement to what's out there today. The city has included in the conditions of approval, uh, B, under PD 2022-0012B13, that is problematic. It requires City Ventures to attain a water acceptance deed or easement from the southern property owner. As I just described our system, it's a system that works independently and one that doesn't, it's, an easement is not necessary, nor should it be required. On top of that, California drainage law also grants an automatic prescriptive easement to upper properties and requires lower parcels to accept natural drainage. By requiring this easement, it could essentially give the property owner the ability to, to request whatever he or she wants. For example, they could ask $10 million for this easement, which I know is an exaggeration, but it's possible. And so by approving this project and keeping this condition in there, um, it's essentially approving it without really approving it, because we'd still have to do that work with that property owner. What we did was we provide, we provided an alternative condition. It allows the same language that the city's provided. It also gives us the opportunity to move forward with this project, make sure that we are providing future stubs that would allow for development to the south to move forward. As I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, City Ventures has always been a, a solar, all-electric home builder that focuses on, on efficient and green building features. One of the main standouts is an all-electric, as an all-electric builder, there will be absolutely no gas. Um, so all appliances will be electric, which lowers the utility bills. Um, on top of that, the, the solar panels are included on day one of the purchase, so there's no rentals or leasing with the panels. So the residents experience those savings on day one. Um, others are, you know, uh, five-star appliances that are included in, in all homes, uh, as a standard, so the residents don't need to pay for upgrades. At the end of the day, California needs housing. Simi Valley needs housing, and this site is an opportunity for a beautiful new home community for the city of Simi Valley. This concludes my presentation. We're welcome for any questions and open discussion.
All right. Do I have any questions from council members? Looks like we do. Uh, Mayor Protim Rhodes?
Push the button. Um, so, um, your last statement was, I think, a great, um, closing statement, and we have an agreement on that. I, I, I like this project. I would like to see it move forward as long as it doesn't, um, damage any of the other, um, people in the community, and I think that's where we're kind of getting down to, is that. Um, in your report and in your presentation, you talked about, um, uh, different places these systems have been, uh, installed. Um, I haven't seen any design of them. I haven't seen any operations manual of them, and I haven't seen any reports of any problems that cities have had dealing with, uh, HOAs, dealing with the maintenance of these systems. Do you have any, at least anecdotal, um, things you can share with us that say, "The system's gonna be okay if we do it"? Because that's sort of like me saying, "Hey, a recent survey has shown". I, I don't have any data to back it up, but, um, what's your data?
So I would defer that to our civil engineer, but I will say that it's, it's typical for the details and, and all of that information to be, be provided post-entitlements during the final engineering phase when we're working with the city to obtain permits.
Totally get that. We know this is a sticking point today, and so today's a good day to do that, because we can always postpone and say, you know, "We'd, we'd love to, but prove it." Um, today'd be a great day to, to bring that forward.
Okay.
Um, just in terms of the reliability of the systems, the problems, um, I've personally, when I've designed several of these, and some of them going back even like 15 years is the oldest one that I can think of. And the HOAs of today are a lot different than HOAs of the 80s and, you know, further back. Um, there's pretty robust maintenance and budgeting requirements, and I, I attribute that to why I've never had a phone call about these, uh, failing. And believe me, uh, the civil engineer is the one that they call when something goes wrong, because frankly, um, I stamped it. I have liability. They know that, and they're, you know, looking to me to solve problems generally. It's, it's not the city. You guys might get a phone call, but nobody's gonna be looking to you to fix it. Um, so I've never had a problem with a pump failure, uh, damaging problem. So I've never had a problem with a pump failure, damaging problem. We've had issues maybe in the first few storm events with some of the telemetry and the system turning on and off, and, you know, there's a little bit involved with that, getting it, you know, functioning, because it has floats and different sensors for it turning on and off. But again, I go back to the importance is it works if it doesn't work. The importance is, is that if the pump fails, we're back to just how it's working, historic drainage flow. No one's houses are getting flooded, no one's cars are getting swept away. And, you know, it's interesting that the proposal, or what we're trying to be told to do is get an easement, put in a pipe, go down to the Arroyo. Pipes also clog. I mean, I could show you guys pictures of, you know, I hate to say it, but in Costa Mesa, down in Orange County, I could show you pictures of people kayaking through the street because a pipe clogged, a 30-inch pipe, and if it clogs, what's the backup plan? And you have to have your backup plan be surface flow. That's how, when they, you know, did California drainage law back in the 1800s, they didn't have pumps, and they knew that everything naturally flowed surface flow until it got to a channel or a river, and that's effectively what we're proposing to continue to do. So we'll, you know, design the pump as robust as it can, but you have to make sure it works without a pump being there, quite frankly.
So to that end, I know it has detention. Well, I actually didn't know that until you made your presentation, so thank you for that. I understand we're holding and regulating the flow out, not just shooting it down the street. In the walk through the neighbor's yard, it would appear that the stuff that flows to the south down Oak Road bends right at his property, because there is a gully, a ditch, a cavern that is being created, and so a bubbler there, I think, would just have it go down and end up in the same spot in his yard.
And if it was on the west side of Oak Road, I would agree with you. On the east side of Oak Road, it has a little bit of a crown to it, and that's where.
And how's that going to keep from going into the trailer park?
The trailer park is actually up higher. If you look at our hydrology map, we're showing some of the trailer park actually comes onto the property.
Okay.
So I don't think that having that bubbler go out to Oak Road would, it's going to stay, you know, obviously it's surface flow, so it's kind of wide.
Right.
But it's going down to the Arroyo at that point. It's not flooding the mobile home park, or, you know, if it's on the east side, I don't think it's going down into Brad's house, and, you know, he mentioned that to me, and I looked at it, and I've talked to Brad, too. He said all the same things. I don't know if he's here, but he's a nice guy.
It's that legitimate concern. What do you say was the flow rate of the bubbler?
It's 0.79 CFS in the 100-year storm.
I might have more questions, but I'm good for right now. And just one quick comment, though, on sewer systems and operating them and so on. None of the sewer systems that I know of are operated by an HOA, so I'm just going to just say that out there, that maintenance is maintenance, and I trust city staff more than I trust an HOA to do that, but that's just a comment. I'm done with questions for the time being.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a couple of quick, easy ones. In that south, the southwest corners where we're really the most concerned with, what building is currently in that area, or what's being affected by the rain now, other than the neighbor's yard? Is there something on the property?
No, I'm just going to, I'm going to take a moment, because I think what you said, I appreciate, if it's a good time to make sure we go deep on it and understand everything relative to this situation. So I just wanted to take your question, if it's okay, and just talk a little bit more about the overall system, and reiterate a couple of things that Dane said, which is the detention system on the site is so important to the overall system, and we talk about the pumps and such, but it's really important to understand there's underground pipes here that hold the water, that don't exist today. So right now, the water falls on this site, and it flows down Oak Road, or it flows into that corner. So those are the two historic patterns that exist. And getting to your question, right now, the water that flows to that, we can go back to the map, maybe, that goes back to that southwest corner, flows into the field, the open space in that neighbor's backyard, you can see there. And so there's two conditions that we have to be, you know, deal with. One is if the property to the south is never developed, and that's making sure that the historic flows are consistent with the flow, the flows that we propose are consistent with the historic flows. And in doing that, you're also, and one of the reasons we shared a letter from our attorney with the city attorney, is you're consistent, under California law, there's already an easement in place for those flows. And so one of the things that makes this, you know, the design so important, and the reason that, you know, in the permit set, the design gets totally flushed out, is the civil engineer's liable, but we're liable for this, too. The one party that is not liable in any way is the city, under both state law and because we provided a full indemnity against the city. So we take that responsibility. And so it's very important that we design a system that works. And so to your question of where do you do these before, we've done these in multiple different places, and we ensure that that system is set up in a way that works. What Dane said is so critical to understand as well, if this system fails, the pump system, the mechanical system fails with its redundancies, you still have the detention. The detention is not mechanical. And so the water is held there, and then it will flow to the southwest corner, back to your question, at rates that are below the current level that exists today. Because remember, we're taking part of it and flowing it north now, too, which doesn't currently exist. And so I think staff has done a great job on this project, and we've worked, you know, tirelessly, our team has worked tirelessly on iterations of this. And infill development is really hard. You have a lot of complicated, different things that you have to solve, and worked really hard with our engineers to make sure we design a system that works in all cases with the current develop, the current condition that is to the south of us. The water that flows on Oak Road comes from a bubbler at a rate consistent with those historic flows, again, maintaining the historic drainage pattern that is there. Now, the next scenario we have to deal with is what if the south property was being developed? And so in that case, and that's the reason for addition to B13, is to allow for that and say, okay, if the property to the south is being developed, and we've talked with the developers to the south, and we will work with them with the same civil engineer, and we've offered to offer two stub outs there that would allow to connect into their storm drain system when they develop it, and they're in agreement that we would do that. And the, in doing such, the pumps would no longer even be needed. So the concerns raised by staff of what if these pumps fail? If the pumps fail under the current condition, we're still below the historic drainage in that area. If the pumps fail in the future with development of the south, you don't need the pumps anymore, because we provided the stub outs to tap into. And so it's really critical to understand how hard the team has worked together, and I appreciate staff's, you know, bulletproofing on top of bulletproofing on top of bulletproofing. But I think it's also important to, you know, it's less of a, you know, the design piece has been addressed. There's also the legal piece of needing an easement, and I think it's important for the legal conversation that there is an easement already. There's a prescriptive easement based off state law for uphill flowing to downhill at the same historic rates. So that's already protected. There is already an easement in there. And so that's why we're trying to remove a requirement that essentially becomes a spike to the project to say, well, we're approving it, but not really approving it because you need this, while simultaneously understanding that all of these things need to be in place and protected to allow for the protection of any homes nearby, drainage, drainage patterns all have to work, it has to be redundant, and it has to allow for future development as well. So that's a long answer to a very simple question, but I wanted to make sure to respond to the previous question as well.
All right, thank you. Well, that was only part of my question, so I wanted to know what was there, because we're going to be completely redeveloping this property. So aren't you going to be grading it? And aren't the water flows going to change, could possibly change due to grading, due to the building?
The water flows will change.
That's what I mean. So that's what I was concerned about, and because.
But they're, but they're changing to the benefit.
No, I'm not saying they're not, but I'm just saying right now, we know it pools there. But if we're going to be leveling out, making things more even, odds are it's not going to pool in the same way.
Well, part of it will flow to the north. There was a slide that we showed that there's a portion of the site that will now, with the grades, flow northward. And then there's a portion that will flow to Oak Road, and there's a portion that will flow to the southwest.
So you're basically designing it to flow to those different areas? Okay. All right.
But we're also then taking what flows to the southwest, and it's flowing into a detention system.
Oh, I understand that. I'm fine with that. I completely understand that. Thank you. That was kind of what I wanted to make sure on that. Then my other question, I don't know if it's you, or city staff, or city manager, if the southern property is at any time brought before us, can we not require an easement to be made at that point in time before we rezone that property?
We can condition the property.
Okay. So we always have that opportunity, too? All right, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
On the stub out, I was always picturing it somehow that you were having a stub out so that they could add water to the system that somehow got pumped somewhere else, but you're actually saying the stub outs, the two that are being provided, can be tapped into to then have it drained in the new, not existing yet drainage system that would be built by the improved lands to the south?
Yeah, and I believe the developers to the south are here tonight, but the stub outs would allow for the water on this site, which flows to the south currently, to flow through pipes as opposed to surface.
And it would end up in the Arroyo.
Yeah. Is there, is there any reason not to try and get an easement to just build that drain to the Arroyo now, going through?
The problem is the developers don't own the property.
Right.
And so you end up in a situation, and, you know.
And there's three different properties.
There's different owners, there's different, and so you end up in a, you know, we end up stuck.
Right.
Right? And when they're developing their property, you know, they'll work with us to make ours work, we'll work with them to make theirs work. And the, but that's with the developers, once they own the property and are developing it. So I think we are, we are in agreement with them to work to make the projects each work, but the current owners, that's a different story.
Since you brought that up, in our staff report, there was an indication that there was a barrier to communication, use that word, and then in my talking with the neighbor to the south, he thought there was a barrier of communication the other direction. Are you guys really talking, or, I mean, how much communication's going back and forth?
They're here, so we're talking, and we will, we will work together to make sure both projects work.
Okay. All right.
Is that fair?
Okay. That's good to know.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question. If I could. And thank you, Dee Dee, for your questions, which, about grading, et cetera, and how things get changed, et cetera. Ultimately, there is, right now, the way things drain, the way it is currently, is, I mean, it, would it, even if we didn't do this system, let me just say, would it make, would there be more of a drainage problem, or just be, would it stay the same? Would it, I mean, what?
What you'd have is you'd have drainage through the punchouts. If there was no system, whatever, one thing you'd have is you'd still have detention.
Right.
Right? So the water would slow and go into those detention pipes underground. So there'd be a slowing down of the water offsite. You'd also have water going to the north, which you don't have currently.
Right.
So you're reducing some of the amount of water flowing to the south.
Even without.
Southwest.
Even without the pumps.
Right. What you would end up with, if the pumps weren't there, is you'd have that detention, you'd have water, and then the remaining water would flow to the southwest and would go through those punchholes at rates that are below the current amount of water that flows to the south. Because remember, you have some water going to the north, and you have detention at this point. Does that summarize it well?
Okay.
Make sure we ask the expert, too, so.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And also, as you could see, there's not much landscaping on the current site, so the proposed landscaping on our project would also reduce some of the flow naturally.
Okay. And just to change the subject, since you're here, speak to, only because I drove that there today myself, although I didn't have the conversations you did, but that's, the road currently is definitely not 30 feet, or doesn't, would you speak to what the road improvement and what that does for that whole section, if you would? It was, it seemed pretty poor shape.
Yeah, so currently, the road is roughly 15 to 20 feet. So we, whether the development to the south comes on board or not, we would be expanding that road to 30 feet, so I could go back to the site plan. So we would be expanding it 30 feet by design.
And will you speak to the size of the road at the south corner? So it's 30 feet all the way down that you will be?
That we're proposing.
That you're proposing.
Correct, yes. So previous design, we had it shown at 24 feet, which was the requirement from fire department. As we worked through city staff, it was asked to expand it to 30 feet with the idea that a proposed development to the south was coming on board. So we agreed to that.
To give them more access.
Absolutely.
Bigger access.
Yes. Because 24 feet wouldn't be wide enough for their main access road.
Interesting. Okay.
And then you could see, well, it's hard to see, but towards the bottom left side, we are currently striping that to taper it down to the current condition for the property owners to the south. If that does go forward, we would re-stripe, or, you know, just take away the striping, and then it connects all the way through.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, can you put your proposed change up on the slide again? I was trying to read it as you're going through the presentation.
The which?
The proposed, the substitute condition that you had.
Oh. And I do want to, I meant to call this out earlier. As we were going through this with planning commission, the way planning commission recommended it was, was not to approve the project contingent on this. It was more of making sure it was known to city council and essentially letting, letting you all vote for it. So I just want to make sure that it wasn't that we agreed to it necessarily, but as the planning commission staff report came out, I made it clear to city staff that there was a concern with that easement, but it was more so you as the final vote to have that condition here tonight, or conversation here tonight. Sorry to cut you off.
For council, for our attorney, how do you feel about the city's future liabilities with this situation? And even though we might not be liable, we're going to get sucked into it.
And that's always the concern in any of these circumstances. Again, I'm not an engineer, so I can't take a stance on that. I will say that when the project was sort of brought to us, from my office's standpoint, one of the things we focused on was protection of liability for the city. So incorporated into the conditions is that indemnification procedure. And I'll say, even notwithstanding that, I believe that there may have been other things that exist. That said, that wouldn't stop the city from getting dragged into a lawsuit and us still having to sort of deal with it. Now, again, there is an indemnification provision, but we'd still have to deal with staff getting deposed and witnesses and everything that sort of comes along with that. I'll also say with respect to the prescriptive easement discussion, prescriptive easements are only determined by courts, so we can say that a prescriptive easement exists based on historical patterns, but at the end of the day, those things are fact-specific, and a judge makes the decision, not the parties themselves.
Transferring the liability to the homeowners association, is that realistic? Does that happen?
I think that that would, is more of a question for staff. If the question is whether legally it can be transferred, it can be, but I think staff's concern is what would happen once it gets transferred? Can they actually maintain it? What resources would the city then have to use to work with an HOA? Again, that's outside of my wheelhouse, just from a legal standpoint, I can answer those questions.
But legally, it can transfer to the HOA?
That is correct. That is correct.
All right. Hope it's not our HOA up in bridal passage. Never work.
Just a clarification on the state law. There's the prescriptive easement, if you were to get, go through the court process of an easement. But under state law, the drainage patterns are protected. The historic drainage patterns are protected.
And I'm familiar with that.
Yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that I wasn't implying that a prescriptive easement was necessarily needed, that the historic pattern, that the law protects under just those historic patterns. So is that?
As long as you, that's correct. As long as you're going through the historic patterns and historic flows, right? So if you're changing the flow or the patterns, then you're no longer going through the same historic thing.
Correct. And that's been, but that's an important point, because that's what the bubbler is for. That's why we've really focused with our civil engineer on the flows. And so, and that's the detention that holds that, the bubbler that allows the flows on Oak Road to be consistent with those patterns. And then the water, remember, all the water goes to the southwest right now. So the historic patterns are even below, we're even below the historic patterns in the southwest. So you have a situation where if the system is working, the flows on Oak Road match or are under the historic flows. If the system fails, the water goes to the southwest and is under the historic flows. So in all cases, you're under those historic flows, which is why we, you know, are pointing out that law that you don't need an easement. And again, what we're working towards here is trying to find a graceful solution to a problem where I think, you know, and again, I appreciate what staff's doing. It's their job to protect the city, and I appreciate that. I think that's something they want to do. We do, too, because we want to protect ourselves. We have a self-interest in that, too, in making sure that we don't have anything, you know. Could the city be dragged into it? Yes. Will we be dragged into it? 100%. We're responsible for it. And we've indemnified the city. So we've tried to provide as many protections as one reasonably could. And as Dane pointed out, you know, a pipe could clog, too. Could the city get, but you don't, you know, we don't typically indemnify the city on top of indemnity for that. Things like that happen, and the developer ends up, and again, under state law, we're responsible for that, too. So I just want to be really clear on that. Is that?
Well, I think that we've, you know, talked this thing through, but I know that there's a lot of other people that I believe want to comment on this. So I think it would be best that we move on, and there's always an opportunity to come back and respond later.
Yeah. Happy to answer any more questions if they come up. Thank you.
So are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I do have two speaker cards.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and proceed with that.
Carol Austin Brock, or Coral, I'm sorry. Hi. My name is Coral. I believe I'm in District One. I'm on the corner of Alamon Arranger. I just wanted, as a member of the public, to express my support for new housing. I attended a neighborhood council meeting with City Ventures where they proposed another plan that they had, and I was very disappointed that my neighborhood council voted to deny their recommendation because they had some pretty biased and uninformed opinions on there. I appreciate you guys asking a lot of questions to protect the city, but I would really hope that you guys keep an open mind and understand that there are many members of the public who can't afford to live where they grew up. I have two roommates who live in my house. Their families live here. They've lived here their entire lives, and neither of them can afford housing, even though they both work full-time jobs and make, not quite, six figures, but just below. So having more options, attainable housing, not just affordable housing, is really important to me. And that's pretty much all I had to say. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Louise Strassman.
Yeah, my name is Fish Strassman. I'm the property owner of the shopping center next to the project. The reason I come up here, I have tried to get some answers, which I could not, from the paperwork. And one of them is where the water going from the pumps? I didn't understand the direction where it will be thrown. The reason I asking, my property is next to them, and the back of my property, where is the Chunk Road, I own the Chunk Road, is meant, there is underground pumps. So if they're going to grade it in that direction, it's mean when their pump fail, my pumps will work over time or will not work. Second things, I've been owner of this property about 25 years from experience, except that I own copper companies, and I'm engineer. It's a big problem with underground pumps. The gardener like to blow the leaves in, so you have the pump fail very frequently. Second things, if you even say, no, 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 they will not do it. It still happen from the leaves, from the trees, and from the flowers. So it's not easy to maintain a place like this. In my opinion, at least twice in the winter, you need to open it, clean the leaves, otherwise the pump will be stuck. Then I asking from, as an engineer, how many gallon per minute this pump will pump to the street? What happen if the street plug? It's mean I am their neighbors, lower lever maybe from them, it will be flood my place. So, and this is the, I never been notified about this project, only through the mail from a very nice lady. She's sitting here, and she give me a help as much she can, but I never know about these people. I don't have any contact with them. They never ask me what is my opinion, if I'm reject, or if I agree, or what will be effect on my property. I own that shopping center, and if it's going to be like floods and this, it's going to affect my property. So this is the reason I decide to come up to talk, because before you guys approve it, we need to agree with, between my property and their property development, how they going to resolve all this problem? I didn't get the answers from today what I receive. I don't think it is satisfied me. So as I say, I'm not say that I don't agree that they will do their job, but I do reject, before you guys approve it, they need to convince me that it's not going to affect my property. And I own their nice, nice shopping center for 25 years. That's what. No, no, I'm not, I don't ask to comment what I ask if you can, I will ask them later on to sit down on this. And also, the other things I like to be there for the city. Chunk Road is under my name. Today, it's full of potholes. Know how much cars will go add on it to make it a highway, freeway, or whatever you call it, with 70 units more? So it's going to be much more maintenance. Today, I approach other partners, of four partners there. One of them used to be the school. Now I understand it's them. Second partner, they're sitting here. And the third partner is the mobile home, and I am the fourth partner. The mobile home partner, past six months, I tried to make them negotiate to plug the, or close the potholes. They even don't respond. I talked to the major managers every time. Only one partner, they're sitting here, they agreed to sit down. Now, these things also, as I say, from the city council, I'm not saying you need to answer. Need to be resolved before you give them permission, because I want to be part of it, please. That's what I have. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Could you help me understand where the, what's the property, where's yours?
Mine is 5924 Los Angeles Avenue.
Okay. So it's on.
It's the northwest side of the development.
Gotcha. Okay.
Where is the Lux Smith Liquor Store.
Got it. Cool.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker card.
Now, does staff wish to respond to any of the previous comments?
I have just a few comments. If you could bring up the picture. The drainage report that we received, this is a section of the drainage report. So I just wanted to let you know, the little triangle that they were showing in blue basically covers the area called historical drainage. However, the, this is what the engineer provided as the flooded, ponded area. As far as the condition to reduce their flow off the property, you size the detention basin to accomplish that, however large it needs to be. The city's requirement is that 100-year flow reduced down to the 10-year. That's engineering speak for just keep it small. 10-year is basically what fits in a gutter. It gives you the idea. But what the concern is, is they're indicating what comes down the road is .79. Sounds like a pretty small number. However, that represents all of the area. The section of roadway that you see that is around the proposed pump, just that little rectangular section there, if you look up at the top, it says it's Q10 is .24. So it doesn't really exactly match what's existing. And the only concern with the applicant saying that, what was the quote here? That for, when you use the word "all," you know, you've got to be careful. In all cases, basically, when the pump comes on, it has to run in all cases. So as soon as it fills from the entire site, it needs to pump water over to Oak Road. So it will pump more water at a higher flow than you would normally expect up to a 10-year event. And then after that, it would be reduced. So for large storms, it would improve the situation. Smaller storms, like once a year, you'll see more flow coming down the street because of the size of the pump. Unless they reduce the pump down to .24, that would be the existing number that comes down the driveway. Now, perhaps, when we get to design, they will change the flow. But that would be the requirement in that regard. Just a couple, I'm not going to go too extensive on this. The thought about you can't shut off the water, yes, you can. If you're home, you have a leak, you shut off the water. If it's a HOA, you tell everybody, we have to shut off the water because we have a problem with the sewage pump. That's a better control. Again, you can't shut off the rain. Just to make it clarified for the gentleman who had the question, the north part of the property basically drains to, with a storm drain, to a storm drain in Los Angeles Avenue. So what they've done is tried to run the slope as far as they can into the property until they run out of height, and they're still buried. And then all of that property goes into that drain. So that was how they were able to take it. So there won't be any drainage going into the street on Los Angeles Avenue. It will be in a storm drain. Let me just real quick here. The problem with their alternative condition is it doesn't mitigate the environmental document. The environmental document declares that the project, that the proposed grading and earthquake work activities on the project site would alter the site's existing storm drain patterns. So that's the reason why we are proposing B15. It's up to you to decide if it's mitigated in other sorts of ways to be able to consider their proposal. But at this time, we haven't seen anything that would give us any comfort in their proposed alternative. Basically, they already show a stub in their plan in Oak Road. Adding another one in the southwest corner doesn't necessarily do anything to the city, because the proposal is to give it to the city. And the city's not going to be interested in taking any easement, taking any pipe. So they would have to somehow dedicate it to the neighbor. I don't know how that works. So that's about all I want to dig into, any clarifications on what the applicant presented.
And you touched on, to Mr. Strassman's concern, there's nothing here that would change any drainage to Chunk Road?
That's correct. From what I'm looking at, nothing would go to Chunk.
So traffic patterns, yes, from the units, but not drainage? Correct.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. Does the applicant wish to, does, have any rebuttal to anything?
Just want to comment back to, I think it's Mr. Strassman. As far as never contacting, as part of the process with the city, very early on, we were required before the, I think it was before the pre-screening hearing. Initially, we had to send community outreach letters to a certain radius. So we did that very early on. We did it a second time on our own behalf to have a community Zoom call. And there were, the mobile home park property manager and some of the residents did participate in that meeting. So I just want to apologize if he didn't get any of those letters. And I'm happy to meet with him after this, give him my contact information, and make sure that it's a, you know, it's a partnership moving forward. And then I will let our civil respond to Brent's comment.
I think I'd just say Brent's comment about the bringing it even down to the 10-year storm, we would not be opposed to working with Brent to make that happen. We totally hear loud and clear that everyone's very concerned about making sure that the situation is improved, and that's what we've kind of always said we're going to do. So, you know, that's totally fine. But what, again, we're not okay with is a condition that's impossible to meet. So that's kind of the whole, you know, the whole point of me coming up here. So if adding more detention does it, I think that we could come to an agreement on that. And then there was the comment about the leaves blocking up the pump. And I just want to, not to beat a dead horse, but there's also filtration systems that are proposed here. We have to do that for water quality requirements. So a leaf trash getting in there is not likely at all to get into the pump system. Thank you.
Is the filtration system part of the maintenance program for the HOA?
I know I've seen it, so I'm just going to have the applicant verify it. You did post the required signage up front of your project, correct?
Correct. That was before.
Thank you.
Let me hit on opportunity. All right. Well, then, at that point, this hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from city council members?
Well, we're going to have to, I think, come to a decision on this condition, B13, and see how do we protect the city and also get housing? And that's going to be our, I think, our touch point, our discussion point on that.
Yeah. I mean, we need additional housing. And I particularly like it because, one, it's the most bizarre piece of land to develop I've ever seen. It's almost invisible from the street. And, you know, my preference for additional housing right now is definitely more affordable for sale than more apartments. So I love the project, and I want to find a way to make it happen, so.
If I can, I'll just throw this out as a starting point in the conversation. And it is this. I think that this developer has had a good, open dialogue with staff. And I know that the developer to the south was here and didn't choose to speak, but I was. but I was hoping to hear from them if they had a preference or a concern on this moving forward, but we didn't hear that. I'm okay with voting to do this zone change amendment. I want to know how we put in the, if we remove the B-13 as it is, a requirement for an easement, what assurance we can have that cooperation will continue with staff to get that flow rate to an acceptable rate, so on. I don't know how we add a condition at this point, if we can. I think so.
Well, there's always going to be other things that's going to be required as part of the design. And so I think that easily they could work with staff to do different things. And so what's before you right now, though, are just these current conditions that are recommended, and whether we accept them or not. There's no proposals to have any other conditions or to do any modifications. It's just whether this one condition puts a stop to the project or whether we're going to order that it moves forward.
I think that, if I can add, if staff, or if the city council wishes to, this can be continued with direction to staff to continue to work with the developer to identify a condition that would meet that request. What we've seen so far is, you know, staff has identified a condition that they have placed on the project, which the planning commission had approved and considered the project with that. The developer has provided a modification to that condition. And as we've heard tonight, it sounds like staff and the developer are still a little far apart from that. So if the city council, you know, wishes to continue this item for staff and the developer to find, or have a little bit more time to potentially find some common ground, that would be an option. If the city council has a suggestion for the modification that they're looking for, we can certainly have that conversation.
Mayor, if I might comment?
Absolutely.
I keep going back to the fact that we, there was a pre-screening in 2022, and they started this process in 2021. I'm not really looking to delay this any more than we have to. I'm very mindful that we have a lack of housing and a lack of affordable-for-sale housing. Actually, affordable's not the quite right word. Attainable, because I, this is not affordable in my book, but it's attainable housing. You know, I recognize that we don't normally have the drainage done in this manner for the pump. But as I've heard the presentation and seen what's before us, what I'm getting is that even if their system fails, it's not going to be worse than what is currently on the property as it sits. And so in my mind, is it worth delaying a process to maybe fix it or tweak it better and kick the can down the road? I do see it problematic to require an easement, basically of them in order to go forward with the project with a neighbor to the south. That puts a lot of, a lot of power in the neighbor to the south. And I just, that doesn't feel right, particularly when they're uphill, et cetera, and, you know, water drains, and anyway. And it just doesn't, to me, doesn't feel right. And so as I'm hearing this presentation, and the discussion, what I'm hearing is that there is a detention basin basically built in. It's not immediately. The water's detained, there is a pumping system, there's a redundant pumping system. So if I understand that correctly, there is a backup pump. When the first pump doesn't fail, the second pump starts to work. And then, and then it's, even then, it's not released, it's not flushed down the street. It's released at a flow that is comparable to what would happen in a regular rainstorm. It's detained and then released, you know, at a reasonable flow. And if what they say as far as, and I thought your question was good, as far as east or west on that road, if it is, if it is on the eastern side and the slope there is such, anyway, just to me, it seems it's reasonable and certainly better than probably what's currently there. And so, and I'm just mindful of what this property looks like and how it will be improved. Now, I have worked on that property. I have gone to Phoenix Ranch and worked on that property. And it is, as you said, Mayor, it is an odd piece of property. It really is. And I'm personally delighted that a company has found a way to build something that is for sale, that is attractive, and that will help fill a problem niche in our housing market. And so I don't, from what I've heard tonight, I understand, I appreciate the staff's concern about really wanting to make sure it works. I appreciate concerns about HOAs aren't perfect. But I actually think the additional language that they've provided, which basically allows them to, in addition to the pumping system, which is all part of it, instead of having to try to make this easement happen, which has its problems, does basically require them to provide ways to, if desired, work with the southern property. And that's my, that's my reading of their modification. So right now, I'm inclined to say I'd like this project to go forward with their modification as presented, but that's where I'm feeling right now.
Okay. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, you did a great job. I, it was very thorough, and I had a lot of questions. And I was able to find the answers throughout the reports and such. So, and I'm very thankful for all your concerns about protecting the city and the water flows and such. And I know you're our flood master, so I know you're an expert in this area. So I really appreciate all that. On the opposite side, we do have a semi-different solution that I think is looking like it's feasible. It sounds like City Ventures is very willing to work with us to get that flow to where it needs to be to make us happy. The other thing is, we do have some control on that southern property because it's going to have to come to us for a zoning amendment, depending on what they want to propose on development there. And that, part of that could be, if you still require an easement, that could be part of our conditions on changing any zoning on that property. That's why I asked that question in the beginning. But it sounds like City Ventures and the property owners are willing to work together. So I think that's a very big positive. And we do need the additional housing. The designs are beautiful. The one-bedroom ones for the, very attainable. I'm very, very much in favor of that. We have a lot of people that those will really benefit here in the community. So I'm in favor with it, of it, as long as they continue to work with our wonderful staff.
So I'm going to put a little more pointed stuff on your comments, because I agree. The two things that I heard tonight that I was looking for is, I want to make sure that Brad and his wife's life don't get worse, they get better. And it sounds like the pump system, even when failing, wouldn't make it worse. And if the bubbler is actually going to, and the thing that, and you pointed out, if it's going to the east side of the street, will actually roll downhill instead of down driveway, I think that that also makes their life better if the land never gets developed. The other thing that I didn't fully understand was the reason for the stub outs and for future systems, that that pump only has to work as long as there's no development to the south. And if there is development to the south, which I think that we're thinking and hoping, something will be brought before us, that then that pump system just has to work till then. And then it will make that development easier to entitle. So I would also be for moving this forward without that B-13 condition as long as we're working with staff.
I'm sorry, when you say "without," do you mean with the language that they're proposing added to the B-13 condition?
Then... I will entertain a motion, if you have one.
I can do it, I just have to get there. Sure. Okay. I would move that we would... Yeah. Well, no. Top of page nine. Well, this is slightly different than what's, okay. Top of page nine is the same, introduce, well, basically, we have, okay. Introduce, or I move that we introduce ordinance number 1360, approving the zone change number ZS 2022-003, and adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And we adopt resolution number 2024-38, approving general plan amendment, number GPA 2022-0001, plan development permit number PDS 2NT 220012, investing tentative map number VTT 2024-001, and adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And move that we adopt resolution number 2024-39, approving the affordable housing agreement, AHA 2022-0002, with, and it's not stated here, with the amendment as proposed to B-13, as proposed by the developer.
That was the second? All right. Call for a vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, you're not going to stick around for the rest of it?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar. And there are two resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent item six, resolution number 2024-40, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley authorizing the execution of the recipient certifications and assurances for the California Department of Transportation's State of Good Repair Program funded by the Senate Bill One, SB One, for fiscal year 2024-25. Consent item seven, resolution number 2024-41, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley accepting the public improvements for track number 6019 located at 2145 Callahan Avenue.
And I am not pulling item number one.
Move consent?
Second.
That was a motion?
It was a motion by Mike and a second by DeeDee.
Call for a vote?
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 9A, authorization to waive the bidding process pursuant to the Simi Valley municipal code and award a contract to Econolite Control Products, Inc. for traffic signal equipment. And Public Works Director Ron Puchewaki is here to present this item.
Good evening again, Mayor Thomas and council members. As indicated by the city clerk, staff is recommending that the city council waive the bidding process and award a contract to Econolite Control Products, Inc. for the purchase of traffic signal equipment. The city currently operates 121 traffic signals, and the signal control infrastructure is aging. And as you all know, has recently experienced outages and delays in repairs. These intersections are operated with traffic signal controllers manufactured by Econolite Control Products. In 1984, the city selected Econolite products for its traffic signal and control equipment, such as controllers, signal cabinets, and auxiliary equipment. Having the equipment that's compatible with existing traffic signal infrastructure is essential to maintaining uniformity and operation of the signal systems. Over the years, Econolite has demonstrated positive performance and availability of signal equipment and technical support. Additionally, Econolite controllers provide compatibility with existing equipment for traffic signal synchronization purposes. The ability for the signal to purchase and maintain, the ability for the city to purchase and maintain a supply of signal equipment enables the city to respond quickly to unforeseen and emergency circumstances when needed. Additionally, the city may purchase Econolite equipment that may be used for other traffic signal projects, such as proactive equipment replacements or intersection upgrades performed under separate contracts and possibly by other contractors. It is requested that the city council approve the recommendations in the staff report. And I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Litzner?
Thank you, Ron. I want to be sure that I understand what we're voting on. This is to extend or to award a contract to Econolite Systems, correct? To basically pay them $200,000 to...
This is to award a contract to Econolite Control Products.
Okay.
For clarification, Econolite Systems, Inc. is our maintenance contractor.
Okay, so it's systems, that's why I make sure. There are two, we've got two entities. We have Systems, Inc. that does the work.
Yes.
We have Econolite Products, that is the mechanism that we use.
Yeah, manufactures the...
The manufacturers, okay. And so when I first read this report, I thought, why do we want to award a contract to a group that hasn't been able to fix the lights immediately or take the initiative to have inventory on hand? That was my first, as I first read this. And so you're telling me that they're different? And so, are they the same company? They're two totally, they have the same names, but they're two separate entities?
My understanding is they're two separate entities, two separate businesses.
Okay. So does Econolite Systems have an exclusive arrangement? Are they the only ones that can use Econolite products?
I don't believe so. Any public agency, and several do, can buy Econolite Control Products.
Okay. So we could, I guess what I just didn't understand is why are we using a service provider that doesn't have things on hand to fix our problem immediately? Anyway, I, that...
Isn't it us that needs to have the supply on hand?
Not necessarily. They, under the, under the maintenance contract, they're required to provide the equipment for repairs.
Yes.
It's just that sometimes, and even though they're Econolite-Econolite, sometimes that equipment is not immediately available to them. So what, the goal of this contract is to, for the city to, in advance, purchase some of this equipment that we know is going to be needed. And if the maintenance contractor can't immediately provide that equipment, we can provide it for them and then get reimbursed later.
I hear you. And I guess I just want to be careful that we are not rewarding a company for not being really diligent in the first place. So, and I guess because we've just had so many failures in the last year. It's just seen more so than I've seen in years. And I know the equipment's getting older, but it is, but it's good equipment. We want to buy, we want to keep using that equipment. So I'm trying, where is the, anyway. And so if I understand, you're, this is asking for $200,000 more just to have more stuff on hand in case Econolite Systems can't get around to it fast enough?
Well, that's not get around to it, is it?
Or not fix it quickly?
If they can't get the equipment that they need immediately from Econolite Products, and if we have it on hand in stock, we can provide it and then get reimbursed. In addition, as I indicated, we have an annual program to proactively replace traffic signal control equipment, cabinets and controllers. And so we would use this contract to purchase that directly, issue a RFP or a bid specification for a contractor to do that project. It doesn't always necessarily have to be Econolite Systems. It could be any other traffic signal company.
So, and that kind of leads to my next question. What are the terms of our current service agreement with Econolite Systems? What are the terms of our current service agreement with Econolite Systems? When does that contract come up for review? When does it expire? Are there any conditions in that contract that they have to perform within a certain amount of time? Or they forfeit, or they lose a percentage of the money, or I don't know, something that compels them to respond quickly?
My recollection is their contract expires June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. We are in the process of initiating a new R F P.
Please. I'm sorry, keep going.
To send out and see what kind of results we get, and proposals from other traffic signal maintenance companies.
I can interject. Do you mind, Ron?
Oh, no.
No, no. So a couple of things. With the recent outages that we've had at some of our traffic signals, some of our neighboring communities have been generous and have allowed us to, have, have lent us equipment so that we could get our signals back up online faster. So one of the things that this would do in addition to allowing us to have equipment on hand, because Econolite does have to respond anytime that there is a blacked-out signal or a red flashing signal, they have to respond within, I believe it's two to three hours to go out and check the signal. If it's black, then they can put it to red flashing. But in terms of evaluating what the equipment is, then we would need to have that equipment on hand or if they can secure it quickly. This would allow us to then purchase some of that equipment to, A, have it on hand, and also, in this case, to repay some of those borrowed equipments that we've had to do. So, because other communities had it on hand when we didn't have it on hand. So this will allow us to be a little bit more responsive to getting some of our signals up and running quicker in some cases. Now, it doesn't apply in all cases, depending upon what the particular issue is. So, as we found recently, like LA and Aringer was a little bit more of a complicated situation. But what this would do is allow the, the city to be able to respond more quickly to try to bring our systems back up faster.
I understand. So this, this basically buys equipment to stockpile so that our, our, our person, we have parts so that they.
Right.
And I, and I guess I'm just a little surprised, too, that our service person isn't, I don't know, doesn't, it doesn't have access quicker to that.
It depends on what the equipment is, because from what I understand, some of our equipment is quite old, because our infrastructure is, is old. So, some equipment that they made normally regularly stocked may not be as readily available as some of the equipment that they have to replace for us. So one of the things actually that Dr. Fuchiwaki and I were talking about is we'll actually be doing an R F P for services to do a proactive evaluation of our traffic signals to identify which signals are more prone to come down, so we can address those proactively as opposed to reactively when they fail.
Okay, and, and then we will also, an R F P, evaluate the response time and all that good stuff. Okay. Just since we're on this topic, just quickly, is any of our issues not equipment-based but S C E-based? That they've, I mean, when there's a surge or et cetera, is that?
That can happen. If the power goes out, depending upon where it is and the purpose of it, or not the purpose of it, but the reason for it, we could be on black signal and then it would, Econolite would respond, put it on red flash. And depending upon what, what happened in there, sometimes we can just put it back to regular, to the red, red, yellow, green. In some cases, though, if it creates some kind of surge, it could damage equipment.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of acquiring more equipment. I just looking for something that makes it happen more immediately.
And I, I do want to clarify, I don't perceive this, and Director Fuchiwaki can correct me if I'm mistaken. Ensuring that we have the equipment on hand isn't necessarily a reflection of Econolite's failure to have the equipment. It's just allows us to be more responsive and repair the issue faster. Because they just don't stock, they don't have the ability to have everything on hand that we would need in all cases, because of the types of different lights and equipment that they're servicing.
They've got the same name.
Yeah.
And I, and I should add that, you know, because of the age of some of our equipment, the models of traffic signal controller and even the cabinets could be different than the ones we're currently putting out, so.
So are we ordering old equipment? Is that what you're saying? That we're going to, we're asked for all their old stuff?
We're upgrading when we can, and we do have a program annually to, to do those upgrades and get rid of those older pieces of equipment.
So the two hundred thousand dollars will buy what exactly in this, that's being, that's being proposed? I'm sorry, I don't mean, I, I didn't.
It, I, I, I don't have an answer for that. The prices of different models of controllers and cabinets, depending on what's inside, will vary.
Okay, right. I guess, how do we decide what we need if some of it's old and we're buying new stuff? And I'm just trying to understand. I want to be sure we spend this money so that not old equipment's sitting around, or new stuff that we can't quite use to fix things. I just want to know how we're determining.
Well, in some cases, I think, like, for example, with LA and Aringer, it was a cabinet completely that was taken out. We had to borrow a cabinet from another community. So having a cabinet on hand would be valuable.
I could see that.
So not only would we want to purchase a cabinet, say, for us to have, we would need to purchase a cabinet to repay the other community, right? So those types of things that we know when they go down, it's, we need to get it back in place as soon as possible.
So likely, this money will go for newer equipment that, not older equipment, that if, if we can't repair something, that at least they can replace it more quickly possibly. Okay. I'll stop asking questions. It's like having a supply cabinet. That's all it is. May I make a motion? Oh, sorry, my.
Councilmember, Councilmember Judge.
My only question, Ron, is the technological obsolescence, because you touched on it, our signals are old. So the stuff we're going to be buying, is it, is it, are we going to be able to maintain that it's, you know, able to be used? In other words, we're not going to update ourselves by keeping stuff in storage that's too old or something like that?
Uh, no, it, it, we'll buy the current models, up-to-date technology, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I doubt that it'll sit very long in supply and it'll be used as long as vehicles don't keep running into our cabinets and controllers. We, we should be okay.
Be nice. Thank you. That's my question.
Yeah, and the question about, you know, the, our, our repair contract, any manufacturer that sells to probably cities all over the place, you know, can have a particular product run out, you know, when they don't have a current production going on it. So, you know, there, there are reasons why they might not be able to get something done. I like the idea of us having backup, but I also know that you're going to use that for updating equipment as we can as well, so, yeah. All right, so, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to waive the bidding requirements pursuant to the S V M C section two dash nine dot two zero one E and award a contract to Econolite Control Products, Inc. for the amount not to exceed, for the amount not to exceed amount of two hundred thousand from October seventh, twenty twenty-four to October sixth, twenty twenty-six, for a two-year term with an option to extend for three additional one-year terms. And authorize the city manager to approve any subsequent contract amendments and incorporate future budgeted funds into the contract amount for the three one-year term extensions as desirable.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item ten A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you. I'll start with Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. I had the privilege of driving downtown and attending SCAG's Southern California Demographic Workshop. I, something just compelled me to find out what really is going on in terms of demographics. And actually, I found it a very interesting workshop. I wanted to share just some of the statistics that came out of it, which I think we're all aware of, but the, the share of Southern California residents who left the state in twenty twenty-two stood at one point nine percent, the same as the year before, though it's still higher than the one point four percent rate during pre-pandemic, two thousand nineteen. So basically, people are leaving the state for reasons that we're, I'm sure, aware of. And so, as, and so basically, just a few of the other statistics that came out of it. Just in a summary, yes, the number leaving has leveled off, but the region is going to continue to experience slow population growth due to accelerated aging and immigration declines, and really also low birth rates, which is, I'm sure we're aware of as well. And so one of the statistics they, they said is that basically, the region continues to age with the share of the population over the age of sixty-five edging up to fifteen point two percent. We're all getting old. I'm just sharing that with all of you. A full percentage point above where it was in twenty nineteen and a full five percentage points above its level in two thousand and six. So along with declining birth rates and declining international migration, it's resulting in a slower population growth across the six-county region and the state as a whole. And I thought this statistic was interesting. Walter Schwam, the chief demographer for the California Department of Finance, noted that California will see population growth fall to an average rate of point two seven percent. I mean, that's not one percent, that's zero point two seven percent. And that's down from previous projections as high as point eight percent. And basically, the state now projects that California's population will peak at forty point two million in twenty forty-four and decline after that. And so it, of course, you know, why does all that matter? Well, it matters a lot when you're trying to build infrastructure or not. And so I think you'll find that SCAG will be changing some of their planning and have started to, where, and they talk about quality over quantity a little bit. In other words, they try to make it better for people realizing maybe they don't need more and more for people, since our population is not increasing. Anyway. So that was an interesting workshop to attend. On Thursday, September twenty-sixth, I had several events I wanted to share. First, I met with two members of the Council on Aging and discussed them, their concerns about the meals on wheels. Of course, we had that conversation at our last council meeting. Basically, they are committed to trying to restore the levels to where they were in March, in May and April, and they want to know how they can be a party in making that happen. They were wanting to move forward with a commitment of, at least from their budget, coming up with fifty thousand dollars and even, and raising matching funds to that point, going out and fundraising so that that level could be restored. But I came away from that meeting with basically two, two discussions that we're going to, waiting to discuss. One was that they wanted, they wanted to be sure that legally they had the, the, and I've spoken with our attorney about this, but legally they have the authority to raise funds for that prospect, or for that, and that funds could be used to actually, for the purpose of providing more food and not for just paying down maybe, or maybe not, basically minimizing our grant funds. They want to be sure that money really will actually increase and not just mean we get less grant funds, so. Looking at that. And secondly, they wanted to wait to see what the county's response is, knowing that this is a county-wide problem and, and that our Board of Supervisor, Janice Parvin, is looking at it as well. So that was the meeting in the morning. I also met, I appreciated, I felt like a fly on the wall, but appreciated being part of staff's meeting when they met with S C E's D R P E P Access and Tutorial Introduction Session. Basically, that's Distribution Resources Plan External Portal. Basically, it's a way to find out what load capacities are currently available on circuits for S C E. And what, I will be honest, what I came away with, what I saw in the mapping two weeks ago looked like we were in trouble all over the place. I swear, S C E changed their map, knowing they're going to have this meeting with us to make it look like we had more capacity. So if that's what it takes, they want to give us more capacity, so be it. Anyway, but it was very interesting to think, and I appreciate the staff and their commitment to making sure that all this information is out to people who want, who need, who are developing and need energy. The third thing, of course, was to attend the city volunteer appreciation dinner with my fellow council members, and it was really a lovely event, and thank you for the committee that put that dinner together. And it was just a great celebration. Hundreds of volunteers in our community that make, that help the city make wonderful programs happy, happen. And so thank you for putting that on. It was an honor to attend that. On Saturday, September the twenty-eighth, I had the privilege of doing what the mayor did the week previous, which was attend the Seventh-day Adventist Political Discourse, and where Pastor Smith was basically talking about the importance of being involved and, and voting and just be, and want to know more what's going on in the city. And so he's invited all of us to attend his Saturday worship services. Also on that day, I attended the Hispanic Heritage Festival at, held at the Simidala Cultural Arts Center. What a wonderful event that was. Well-attended. In fact, it was so well-attended, they were running out of food, and it really was a beautiful event celebrating culture here in Simi Valley. And then that evening, I attended the Metropolitan Fashion Walk Gala. Who would think that here in Simi Valley, we would be the height of fashion for, for the region? And that's where they chose to hold the Metropolitan Fashion Week, hold their final gala. And I gathered that they looked for a place they've never been to before. And, okay, I have to tell you, my big sadness is somehow I left my cellphone home, so I could not take photos of all of these amazing fashions that I would, anyway, that you would never see anywhere, except for on the runway. But others who attended can talk about it, but it was, it really, I felt like it put Simi Valley on the map, that we have lots of wonderful events, and it was, it was really a great event held, held at the Reagan. And actually, I want to thank our tourism district, who, when they saw this was taking place, got involved and to, to use it as an opportunity to promote Simi Valley. And there were people, in fact, one woman I spoke with said, I've never been to Simi Valley before, but I, anyway, she just had to come because it was going to be the Reagan Library and wanted to see what that was all about. I was gone the, most of the week, visiting my mother, who has been in the hospital and just released in rehabilitation. So I was gone in Idaho for most of the week, but returned Friday just in time to be part of a Simi orchestra who are rehearsing for a performance of Veterans Day, and which is great that we have this budding community orchestra. Saturday, appreciated attending the Oktoberfest that was held by Rotary Club, raising funds for great, great activities and great needs. I want to apologize to the Simi Valley Library that I missed their Casino Night fundraiser. I hope some of my counterparts were there, and I hope they did well. I confess, I was at the Nixon Library for another musical event, but hoping that they were able to raise funds and it went well. On Sunday, October the sixth, actually, I'm going to skip from that. Let me just take it to today. Of course, met with Steve, with our Steve Enters, as I mentioned. But I just actually wanted to, just to add my condolences and my sorrow of this very sad anniversary, where over twelve hundred were killed, where we lost forty-six American lives in that terrible attack, and this is just a very sad anniversary. I guess, I just want to acknowledge those who are fighting for freedom and right and pray there might be a way somehow to have peace someday. But anyway, wanted to acknowledge the families that are mourning on this, this day of remembrance, so. Very, very sad anniversary. But that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you want me to go next?
Councilmember Ebonna.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, September twenty-third, I had the pleasure of attending my alma mater, Royal High School's Round Bag Lunch, and I had our city attorney, Al Algeria, I'm sorry, Al Ford, join me. We had a really great time. It was a lot of fun, and we're going to sign Al up to speak next. He's got some good stories from when he was a D A, so that'll be, the kids will really like that. But it was fun to show Al around city, the city a little bit, so that was good. On Thursday, September twenty-sixth, I also attended the city volunteer appreciation dinner at the Boys and Girls Club. I know all of those volunteers love to have their dinner served by all of us. And plus, it's a free meal, and you know how people are in Simi. You, you, free food, and we are there. So, and it was really good, and the, the city team that put that together did an awesome job, as always. It's always a lot of fun, very well put together, great themes and such. So this year, it was Olympics, so it was, it was really pretty good. The M C, we had a, a former Paralympian do the M C. He did a great job. I don't remember what his name was. Nice young man, but he did a great job.
And he's from Simi Valley, too, which is lovely.
Yes, yeah, he was a very, any. He was a very, and he does a very good job. On Saturday, September twenty-eighth, I also attended the Hispanic Heritage Festival at the Cultural Arts Center. It was packed when I got there. I went there for a couple of reasons. One, to support the Cultural Arts Foundation and to see some of the dancers, but one of the dancers was actually, she works for our E D C, Economic Development Collaborative Ventura County, Alondra Gaetan. And she was one of the dancers for Folclorio, and she did a wonderful job. My little five-year-old grandson was just in awe, you know, so, but they were beautiful to watch, and it was really a good time. Plus, I had to support the foundation and buy some raffle tickets. So I now have a four-by-four foot pinata at my house that, that came with a bag of candy. So, so we're going to be breaking that out on Halloween, Halloween night and let the kids go after it. But my grandson wanted it, and it's like four-by-four, it's huge. You should see me trying to get it in my car. I had to put it in the front seat because it wouldn't fit in the backseat with the car seat, yeah. It was, it was fun. Luckily, I wasn't pulled over driving home with it. But it's, it was a lot of fun. They did a wonderful job, and I even heard a couple of people say, you need to move it to a bigger venue, because it was so good and, and everyone really enjoyed it. And I think it will just continue to grow if we do, if we're able to do that. But great time. Congrats to the Cultural Arts Foundation, and they, they do a great job. And thanks to those, uh, council members that sit on the commission, too, so. Monday, September thirtieth, I met, I said, mentioned earlier, we met with the developer tonight, City Ventures, and with Gary Seaton. Then I also attended the mayor's forum. That was very, done very nicely. The Ventura County League of Women Voters always does a very good job of doing the forums. So we had the three candidates, our mayor being one of them, and it was very informative, and they did a great job. So, thank you. On Wednesday, October second, I had my E D C executive meeting. It was funny, Bruce Stansley, our, our CEO, put out a email going, I've only had two R S V Ps, who's going to show up? We had twelve people there. We never get twelve people at an exec meeting, but everyone felt guilty with that email, so we all showed up. But what was really interesting is, I don't know the gentleman's last name, his name's Bill, he does the Ventura County film for us. He did a great presentation, showing the number of films, film days, film permits done throughout the county, and for the last five or six years, I'd like to have him come do a presentation to us at some point in time. I think it would be really informative, and I really enjoyed seeing it because, you know, we're like number one, so it's kind of nice to see that. And, um, on yesterday, Sunday, October sixth, um, we lost a, a very, very loved person from Simi Valley, Jan Smith. Jan passed away in August of, of this year, and I just wanted to share a little bit about her, because I, I met Jan, I think, through the chamber, but when I read her history, there was just so much there. What a, what a great life she lived, um, and what, a lot of things she did for our community as an unsung hero type of thing. So I think she moved to Simi around nineteen eighty, though her, um, the celebration of life note doesn't say exactly what year she moved to Simi with her husband and two kids. But she worked for Kathy Wright, who was our state assembly person for eight years, and then our district senator for eight years. So Jan worked for her those entire sixteen years until Kathy retired. She was our district coordinator as the, when she was a senator. So she really did a lot of forming of things in our community and, and the area. She was very involved in the chamber, um, doing leadership and all kinds of ambassador things. In fact, some of the people talking said she was, she hated the ambassador uniforms and said she was going to quit if they didn't change them. But, so it was really kind of cute. She served three terms on a neighborhood council, and she did four years on our citizens' election advisory council. So these are the unsung heroes, the people you don't hear about, that, how many years was that? You know, thirty, forty years she spent supporting this community in various ways. She truly helped mold our community into what it is, and she will be deeply missed. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, September twenty-third, I attended a meeting, I'm sorry, wrong meeting. Thursday, September twenty-sixth, I'm very sorry, I couldn't attend the city volunteer appreciation, I think it's the first one I've missed in my entire time on the council. But I had to drive, had a lot of me-time that night, had to drive down to El Centro to go on a SCAG geothermal and lithium tour, which was very, very educational. Way too much meat to talk about here, but it was a very educational trip. I learned a lot. Stayed down there for that night, came back. Monday, September thirtieth, I too had a meeting with, uh, City Ventures, the applicant tonight, and Mr. Gary Seaton. We heard the same thing we all heard tonight. That night, I also attended the League of Women Voters. I wanted to say one thing about the League of Women Voters Forum, the mayor's forum they had that evening, is when you run for council or run for office here in Simi Valley, running for mayor or city council, you have the ability to call or email or ask the city any question you want. If you have a question about when roads are going to be repaved or how often we do it, all you have to do is send an email, and that answer is sent right to you. So there was a lot of information being put out at that forum, which was factually incorrect. I just wanted to point that out, so all the candidates know, from now on, when they have questions about stuff going on in the city, they just have to ask. There's no secrets. They'll be told. On Wednesday, October second, SCAG was dark this month for the holiday of Rosh Hashanah, and I too want to mention, October seventh, most heinous and brutal barbaric terrorist attacks since nine eleven. And I want to send my sympathies and condolences to all the families, and I'm hoping for all the hostages to be returned soon, if not now. On Friday, October fourth, I attended the V C C meeting in Camarillo. Nothing too much about our city in there. Most of the discussion was centered around the twenty twenty-eight Olympics, coming to town or coming to L.A., and how our county will be affected by it, and what their plans are, in a very, very minute manner. It wasn't like they had the whole plan done yet, but it was a lot of stuff. On Saturday, October fifth, I attended the car show over at the Elks Lodge. We had one of our biggest car shows ever. I then went from there to the Oktoberfest, put on by the Rotary Club here in Lemon Park, which was a great time. Everybody looked like they were having a great time, anyway. Their new, their new distribution of, of adult beverages is unique, and a lot of people were taking advantage of it, which was good. I did miss the library fundraiser, because I had a lot of stuff I had to do at home that night. And that's the end of my report.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, um, I attended the SCAG demographic seminar for the morning session via Zoom, and you already heard a report from Councilwoman Litzler. On Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, I attended the Chamber Legislative Affairs Zoom call, and, and our city manager, Samantha Argabright, was there, and, um, I've often been giving the report. I was jet-lagged and grateful for you being there and, and taking the maul and running with it, because it was blurry. Let's see, on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, I also attended the city volunteer appreciation dinner, and, and Mike, you've gone to it many times. This is only my second one, but I learned from experience last year that you don't stand next to Councilwoman Litzler because she flings food all over, and, uh, I was two down, and I think Carolyn got it this year.
Okay.
Just saying.
I'd like to deny that, but that's, I can't. I'm so sorry.
Food flinger.
Sorry, Karen. I did get you once, I did.
Friday, September twenty-seventh, I did something kind of cool. I went to the academy graduation of the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, though we didn't have any officers in this contingent. It was really, um, cool to see the pomp and circumstance and the celebration of the massive amount of hard work that cadets go through to, to get through that program and, and Freihoff, when introducing dignitaries, promoted me to mayor, so that was nice. Very nice. Let's see, Sep, Saturday, September twenty-eighth, I also attended the Hispanic Heritage Festival, which you have heard about. I thought it was absolutely fascinating, well-attended. As I like to do, there's, there was a local artist there that made different pottery project or items, and I ended up with a very nice coffee mug to remind me of the event. And that evening, attended the Met Fashion Gala, which, if, if there's ever a moment of a dichotomy of what you would think of be at the Reagan Library, to have the, the fashion thing under Air Force One, it was, it was a wonderful spectacle to see, and congratulations to our, our tourism department and Anthony for thinking about that, getting that here, and it actually really was a great venue for them, and they were really, really grateful and appreciative of Simi Valley calling the dignitaries up more than once, and we got to present our proclamation, and so it, it was a great outreach. Monday, September thirtieth, I met with City Ventures, and that evening, attended the forum. It's so fun not running and watching those, just get the popcorn and enjoy it, and. Thursday, October third, I attended the Government Transparency and Labor Relations Committee of Cal Cities, because there's a resolution that's going to be before us that go to the, to the annual meeting, and it's basically a resolution that says, whatever you vote into Sacramento, it's got to apply to you as well as us. And, and we wordsmithed that for, you know, an hour and a half with forty different people, because that always works out. But I think we have a resolution to, to present to the Cal Cities Assembly. Saturday, October fifth, I attended Oktoberfest. Now, I've got to brag just a little bit, I didn't bring it with me, but I represented Simi Valley extremely well. At Oktoberfest, there are celebrations, and there's the Stein-holding competition, which, if you're not familiar, you hold the Stein out in front of you for as long as you can until your arm falls off. And I am the co-winner, first-place winner, with Alex from San Fernando Valley. Congratulations, Alex. Your mother was very excited, too, and what a great time, what a great event that the Rotary Club put on. And my apologies to the library, I think that I, I, that makes all of us that didn't make it to their event, and I apologize, so. And that concludes my report.
All right, and I'm going to wrap mine up here real quick. Thursday, September twenty-sixth, attended the city volunteer appreciation dinner. Of course, Saturday, September twenty-eighth, I also attended the Metropolitan Fashion Show, which I thought was pretty cool that we managed to actually get them to come here. But I actually had a conversation with the president of the organization, and he actually was the, the one that wanted to have it here, despite his entire board that didn't agree with him. He, he managed to, to get it done, and, and, you know, I think once the event happened, everybody was very happy, and to see how, how, you know, grateful we were to have it here, and it was, it was, it was a very interesting event. Did not see any fashions that I would wear, but, you know. Monday, September thirtieth, I met with City Ventures and Gary Seaton, um, and then I happened to attend the League of Women Voters candidate forum with the mayors. I unfortunately could not sit in the back with popcorn. But it's, it's, it's interesting, and, and I like the challenge. You know, when you're an incumbent running against two challengers, the challengers can just come up with anything that they think is a problem, and that's how they campaign, whether what they're saying is legitimate or not, because oftentimes, I'm finding that they don't really understand the issue. But, uh, two really nice guys, I just, you know, in my opinion, I, I personally think I'm the best qualified. October first, attended the youth council meeting, I love going to that. Youth council meeting is, I mean, that youth council does amazing things, and, you know, I, I'm going to attend more. I wanted to verify what the date was for the town hall.
The, you mean the youth summit?
Yeah, uh, youth summit, yes.
This Friday. The eleventh. The eleventh.
Oh, I thought that was something else. Okay, all right.
This Friday. And you're all going to be there.
Yeah. Um, let's see here, Friday, October fourth, I did a C-level visit with the, the owner and management team from Scientific Cutting Tools. Big operation right here in Simi. It was really interesting. They really appreciated meeting with us. We gave them some ideas of how we might be able to help them. And, you know, I have some questions for our chief as well relating to that. And then, that's it for me. So, I am going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Steve Williams, who is the father-in-law of Richard Limo from the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District. Yeah. Um, yes. But before I adjourn the meeting, do we have any, uh, uh, future agenda items? Request for future agenda items? Okay, well then, now I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.